Good afternoon. Welcome to the New York State Complete Count Commission Meeting Hearing. My name is Jim Malatris. Honored to be with you. Before we get started, we wanted to invite your great county executive, who's sitting to my left, who told me I had to say "the great county executive."[73.11][73.11](Laughter). And if I said that he said I was great, then I would be in trouble. So I don't know where I stand right now, quite frankly. To make opening remarks and then we'd like to get started. We have a very jam-packed hearing, which is great, but we're honored to be here in Suffolk County. We're honored for the really nice weather, and we may actually never leave. So with that, I'll turn it over to County Executive Bologna.
Thank you very much to our co-chair, Dr. Jim Malatris, to our other co-chair, the distinguished Secretary of State for New York, Rosanna Rosado. I welcome all of my fellow commission members and thank them for coming out to Suffolk. We are entering the warm months, so this is a great time to be in Suffolk County. So I hope you keep coming back. And I thank everyone who is here to participate in this important hearing. We're now a year away from the 2020 census, and it's imperative that we make sure every person is counted, which is why we're here today. No matter if you're rich or poor, suburban or urban, upstate or downstate, every person must be heard in our democracy, and is why we take this census so seriously. And our preparations are in full swing. I'm happy to serve on the New York State Complete Count Commission. I want to thank the governor for his leadership on this issue. The commission will be essential to informing and helping direct the state's efforts to guarantee that every New Yorker is counted during the upcoming 2020 census. And in Suffolk, we launched our very own Complete Count Committee. This committee is comprised of local governments, business organizations, advocacy organizations, ministerial and community organizations. We've already completed our first round of subcommittee meetings and are embarking on our second round within the next two weeks in an effort to discuss the best ways to reach every corner of Long Island and create a solid implementation plan for both Suffolk and Nassau Counties through our collaboration with the Long Island Community Foundation and the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island. Suffolk County is not only the largest suburban county in the state of New York, but we have the fourth-largest and hardest-to-count population in New York State. Approximately 40% of our residents live in hard-to-count neighborhoods. This means that many of our communities are at risk of being undercounted. Those who go undercounted can be denied an equal voice in our government and the appropriate federal and state funding for education, housing, transportation, and community development. An undercount could result in the shift or loss of both federal and state dollars as well as representation. It determines redistricting. That boils down to our congressional delegation and state legislature. There's a lot at stake here, but I know that with all of our partners here that we will get this job done right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, County Executive. A rounding round of applause.[253.12][253.12](Laughter).
Thank you.
I'd like to now turn it over very briefly to my great co-chair, Secretary Rosado. Then I'll make some opening remarks, and then I'd like the panel, the commissioners that actually introduce themselves as well, so everybody in the room knows. The name tags are a little small. So first, I'd like to turn it over to the Secretary of State.
Thank you. Oh, hold it, okay. It's my pleasure to be here in Suffolk County, and I also encourage all of you to help us make this the most complete count that we can. I think it's really important that we are here to hear from you, and then we will all work together to make sure we have a complete count. It is a difficult environment, you know, in the whole country, but we're going to do our best to make sure that we have the best count possible here in New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. I can't say it any better than the Secretary, so I'd like to turn it over and maybe start. You could do staff, too, since we have everybody over to my right with Mr. Park. It will go down the rostrum.
My name's Lee Park. I'm the Director of Communications for the Department of State and spokesman for the Complete Count Commission.
Hi, I'm Matt Hinkin. I'm from the Department of Labor, and I'm the Director of Research for the Commission.
Brian Sapp, Long Island Regional Rep, Department of Labor.
Hello, everybody. Hector Figueroa, President of Local 32BJ. We have many members all across New York State and here in Suffolk County. We're very happy to be here.
Good afternoon. I'm Roberta Reardon. I'm the Commissioner of the Department of Labor for New York State.
Esmeralda Simmons, Center for Law and Social Justice, Medgrave's College, City University of New York, and very happy to be here.
Byron Brown, Mayor of the City of Buffalo. I'm very happy to be here in Suffolk County with your great county executive.[385.62][385.62](Laughter).
I want to come up to Buffalo soon.
I'm Lauren Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Pioneer Library System in Canandaigua, New York. I'm the Chair of the New York Library Association's 2020 Census Task Force and a member of the Finger Lakes Digital Inclusion Coalition.
I'm Richard Tobey. I'm Executive Director of the Complete Count Commission and also hold a position in the Department of Labor. I'm told that it's hard to hear in the back. Do we need to speak louder into the microphone? Yes. Okay. So please, let's...
Is that working better? The microphone.
Okay.
Well, projecting we can do, ladies and gentlemen. First, before I'd like to turn it up and start off our program, I want to acknowledge Angela Fernandez, who was one of our commissioners. She has resigned because she took a new position in state government, and Speaker Hasty has replaced Angela with Jose Calderon from the Hispanic Federation. So we are happy to welcome Jose, who does phenomenal work for the Federation, and give Angela our big thanks for all that she did until this point and wish her well on her next venture. Just the co-chairs' privilege, before we start the presentation, Senator Martinez is here, and we'd like to invite her up to give some remarks, and then we'll kick off the presentation. Senator Martinez?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you.[474.31][474.31](Applause). First of all, welcome to Suffolk County. Those of you who have not stepped foot in Suffolk County or on, however you want to say that, but Secretary, thank you so much for being here. I think this is such an important time for us to really come together as a state. And I just want to say to the county executive, also, thank you for taking yet another initiative at the forefront and making Suffolk County, again, a county that moves forward instead of backwards. And I appreciate your commitment and dedication to the county. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to speak before you. In 2020, for the first time, the Census Bureau will be encouraging U.S. residents to complete the census online. This presents a unique opportunity to utilize cost-effective internet-based tactics to encourage early participation. However, the online method presents several challenges, including the need to bridge the gap of New York State's significant digital divide. I've been going around speaking to many of my residents, and many of our elderly are having a difficult time navigating the digital world as it is. I am not a native to the digital world, even though I am a little older, but it's amazing how advanced we are in technology, and we need to make sure that we bridge that gap. Many residents in New York and on Long Island either do not have computers at home or do not have access to reliable internet. Paper and phone options will still be available, but it's important that we work together to ensure that all of our communities have the access to the resources needed to participate in this important tabulation. In partnership with my colleagues in the state legislature, we were able to allocate $20 million in funding in this year's budget to fund community-based census outreach, which will be distributed to non-for-profit organizations and other groups who work directly with the community and its residents. This funding is critical. As a result of the 2020 census, will determine the amount of seats we have in our U.S. House of Representatives for the next 10 years. In addition, a complete census count is imperative to ensuring that billions of dollars of federal funding is appropriately dispersed, including funding for our schools and our hospitals. In 2015, the fiscal year, 132 government agencies utilized census data to determine how to allocate $675 million, much of which was utilized for programs that served low-income families, such as Head Start, which I know we have members here, Medicare, and SNAP benefits. An inaccurate count also has wide-reaching implications on public health services, influencing businesses' decisions, and the appropriate allocation of social security payouts. It is our responsibility as elected officials and members of this commission to do our best to ensure that every citizen has the access to the resources needed to fully participate in the upcoming census count. It is imperative that New York, and most importantly, Long Island, but most importantly, Suffolk County, is proportionally represented, funded, and accounted for. I look forward to a continued collaboration with our great county executive, Steve Bologna, the county legislature, my colleagues, whom I miss terribly, and my colleagues at the state legislature, which I love them now, too, and the Complete Count Census Committee to ensure that everyone counts in 2020. Thank you.
You, Senator.[678.13][678.13](Applause). We now have a presentation. They're all sitting in front of us already, so we don't have to call them up. We're good. I'm just going to list the names so folks know who they are, and then we'll begin. We have Jeff Baylor, who is from the Census Bureau on Complete Count Committee Basics. Jeff has been doing a lot of work, and he goes to every one of our hearings, every one of our meetings. So he puts a lot of miles on the road because he is working diligently to make sure every New Yorker is counted, so we appreciate to have you here, Jeff. Then we have presentations by Vanessa Baird Streeter, who is the Chair of the Suffolk County Complete Count Committee, which we really appreciate all of your work and effort here. It's a lot of hard work, and you get paid a lot of money to do it, so we appreciate all that you do. Saul Marie Jones, who's the Long Island Community Foundation, from the Long Island Community Foundation, thank you for being here. Rebecca Sanon, Health and Welfare Council on Long Island, and then Andrew Mulvey, who is the Chief of Staff of the Nassau County Comptroller's Office. So thank you all for being here, and we'll start with Jeff.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Co-Chair Malatris. Thank you, Co-Chair Rosado, Commission members. It's great to see you again, and happy Friday.[749.54][749.54](Laughter). All right, so I'm going to go in to talk a little bit about complete count committees and the structure of them, but please don't let the structure scare you. The basics of a complete count committee are getting together a group of individuals who have the passion to ensure they get a complete and accurate count for whatever their geography is. They have a leader who will keep the team motivated and coming back to the weekly meetings or the monthly meetings, and they want to work to ensure, in whatever ways they can, with whatever resources are available, to get a complete and accurate count for their communities. So again, it's a bipartisan group of community leaders that focus on primarily three things. First off, promote the importance of the census. Help educate the community members on why the census is important. And in order to do that, it's not just taking what the Census Bureau says, it's learning what are the issues with the community that the Complete Count Committee is covering and adapting the message to reach those individuals, okay? They also help with employment opportunities. I mentioned a few times, the census is a national event, but to be successful, it has to be conducted at the local level. We have to hire people to work in their own neighborhoods when the time comes. And then finally, after Census Day, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, so we still need people to, the Complete Count Committees, to help encourage and support participation in the 2020 census, whether that's going online and filling out their form, whether that's calling a toll-free number, giving their information over the phone, whether that's filling out a paper form, or whether that's talking to the community, letting them know that one of their community members will be knocking on the door, collecting that same information that they could complete online, over the phone, or on paper. So again, tribal, state, and local governments are typically complete count committees. We also have community organizations. When you think of community boards, could be smaller geographies, hamlets, things of that nature. And their core strategy is, I mean, they are the core strategy, I should say, of our partnership program, all right? If the Census Bureau is relied upon to do the census by themselves, we will never be successful. We need the support. We need the input. We need the work together with our resources, with local communities, in order to ensure a complete and accurate count. And then the planning, implement locally-based outreach campaigns, again, raising awareness, educating the community, raising awareness, eventually getting people to fill out their census form and to work to increase participation for their communities. So again, some of the structure, I'm not going to get into too much detail on this, but types of groups that are typically part of a complete count committee, which includes government leaders. Media, both social media and local media, are important to have, whether it's a subcommittee or a part of the Complete Count Committee. Workforce development. When we talk about the importance of hiring locally, it's great to have workforce development and local businesses on board. Education, teachers, community colleges, libraries, community organizations, YMCA's, faith-based communities are also wonderful leaders and the trusted voices for many of the community members. And then any other, so when you're looking at the geography of the Complete Count Committee, what are the challenges? What are the hard-to-enumerate areas? And who represents those areas? Who is the trusted voice for those areas? Those are the type of people that you want on a complete count committee. Again, with tribal or local governments, typically it's led by the highest-selected official or someone appointed by the highest-selected official. It could be, as far as government cities, counties, towns, villages, all the above. And again, charged with ensuring a complete and accurate count for whatever geography that Complete Count Committee is covering. We even have community CCCs, lower-level. So it could be a neighborhood within a city. It could be an apartment building within a community board district. Wherever there's a challenge, if there's a need, and you have local leaders that can come together to support, to talk about how to ensure everyone gets counted, what are the challenges, and then what are the solutions to overcoming some of those challenges, and how do we implement those solutions, they can form a complete count committee. Business leaders, educators, again, media is extremely important, organizational leaders, community-based, every complete count committee needs community-based organizations in order to be successful, and our faith-based organizations. When we talk about a timeline, right now, we don't want to be out in the public motivating them to respond to the census. Now's not the time to respond to the census. Now's the education phase. It's out there telling, you know, educating community members, and more importantly, community leaders, that the census is safe, that the census is easy in 2020, and why the census is important for their community. We'll have our awareness phase, our awareness phase, excuse me, begin, our national media campaign will begin in January, go through February, letting people know the census is coming. We like that if our complete count committees would follow along that same kind of timeline, take the messaging that we're doing at a national level, let's tailor it to the local level, and get that message out to the community. We have our motivation phase, March through May. That's typically the self-response phase, and I do want to stress, a lot of people get confused with self-response versus total response. Self-response is when someone fills out the form online, when they call their information in over the phone, or whether they fill out their paper form and return it. That's self-response. If we can get, you know, 65, 70, 75% nationally, that's fantastic. That means the remainder of the percentage to get to 100, we're knocking on their door. We're not ignoring those people. It's, they're not the undercounted. We're going out there, and we have to physically hire people and knock on doors in those communities. We'll have our reminder phase in May. That's when we'll start knocking on doors, May 13th of 2020, is when we'll begin our non-response follow-up operation, which will continue through the end of July. And then we'll start our thank you phase at the end of July, as well as any follow-up QC, quality control-type operations that we'll conduct. So again, not a slide that I want to use to scare anyone, some points I want to, or some highlights, I guess, as far as the committee's structure. Again, they're developing the strategies for reaching their objectives. We're not defining objectives for a community. The community has to define those objectives. What are the challenges that they have? A timeline, planning key touchpoint dates, developing a list of events that are going on in the community, which it may make sense to talk about the census. Right now, if there's a community event going on, it'd be great to talk about census jobs and that the census is recruiting, because they're going to start hiring for their first big operation this June, okay? One other thing I want to mention, which is extremely important, which, you know, doesn't happen a lot, and I agree, you know, once you get done with the census, you're glad it's done, and you want to celebrate, but it's extremely important to document what worked well and what did not, because those communities that have created reports from 2010, we're reading those to learn what we can't do again. We don't replicate failure. So it's really important to document. There's also tools available for the complete count committees. Great Center for Urban Research and Community Graduate Center, their Hard-to-Count Maps is a fantastic website where you can learn more about hard-to-count communities. The Census Bureau also has a tool, census.gov/rome, but probably most important is the local knowledge of those community members. The data will never keep up with the emerging trends that are going on in your communities, so it's important to have that local knowledge. I wanted to include a snapshot of one tract here in Suffolk County. This is from our census.gov/rome, and you can see the little pinpoint there in Brentwood. This is tract 1456-03, and the important things here, I wanted to point out some of the data. So with complete count committees, it's important to start out small. Don't go and try to, you know, get the complete and accurate count for the entire geography right away. Start out small. Create a plan for those areas that are going to be hardest to enumerate. So on this particular map, the darker shaded census tracts are those that are harder to enumerate. And here in Brentwood, this particular tract, some things to point out, they have a population under five, 8.39% under five. We know children under the age of five, under age of five, are the fastest-growing undercounted group, so that's something we should highlight for this particular tract. We know that the Hispanic population is 70%, so our messaging needs to make sure it hits the Hispanic population. Other things, renters, 38.15% renters. Renters are another hard-to-count group. So you can use these tools available to help you start, where are we going to micro-target, where we need to work first, all right? And you develop that strategy, and then as you start to look at other census tracts that have similar characteristics, you already have a strategy that you can implement, okay? A lot of times, what we've seen in the past in 2010, groups start off with, they want to do it all at one time, and they get stuck, and they get bogged down. It's better to start off small and then grow from there. So great tools that are available. The other thing that I can stress, where we've seen a complete and accurate count work well, is when all levels of complete count committees work together. So let's say we have a community-level CCC in this tract in Brentwood, and maybe Brentwood has a complete count committee, or Suffolk County has a complete count committee, and then, of course, New York. If they're talking to one another, and I really see the state level as being the leader in communication, what you learn from one smaller county level or maybe city-level complete count committee, put that in the toolkit, all right? And then share that toolkit with every complete count committee across the state. That's one role, a very important role the state level can take, so that complete count committees, whether how small they are, whether they're a community level or a city or a county, they have a toolkit to choose from, all right? In addition, they have the lowest level, these community-level CCCs have the best local knowledge of any of the CCCs. They understand the challenge, they know what the messaging should be, and they know how to get that message to the community. Again, they're creating tools for all complete count committees to put into that toolkit. So it is extremely important. It's okay to have a city within a county, both have complete count committees. It works. It's a great tool. In addition, working together in the communication really reduces the duplicative efforts, okay? The one thing we hate to see is one group spending money on something another group is doing in the same or proximity, whether it's city and county. So that's extremely important. Sharing of best practices, I talked about the toolkit. And again, one of the biggest things a complete count committee can do, and they don't, well, it's great to have resources, and they're extremely important, sometime the richest thing they can provide is their data, their input. What is that message, and how do we get that message to the community? Those are great things that can be provided. In addition to this higher tier, I'm sorry to go back one, you have the philanthropic organizations, you have other partners that are maybe national or larger than statewide that can provide tools, can provide input, can provide support and resources to all of these levels, and that's why communication is so extremely important for the census. So I look forward to the conversation from our panelists here today, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff.[1500.12][1500.12](Applause). Before I turn it over to the next panelist, I just wanted to recognize that we've been joined by Commissioner Mustafi, who is the Commissioner of the New York City Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, and we've been joined by Commissioner Calderon of the Hispanic Federation, who's still tired from his big gala from last night but is here, so we appreciate him attending our first meeting. We're going to do the panel separate, but any questions from the commissioners for Jeff?
Jeff, just a very quick question. One of the tasks is to keep track of the formation of complete count committees as they're being formed, and then to share that information. Could you inform the panel how you would prefer to hear about the creation of a committee or a complete count committee, and how you'll share their existence with others?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Thank you. So hopefully, you don't have to do anything, because our goal is to assign a partnership specialist.
That's what he was really asking.
Yeah.[1564.58][1564.58](Laughter). Our goal is to assign a partnership specialist. We're going to have, as of right now, over 200, and we expect that number to grow as we get some additional funding here shortly. But we're going to sign a partnership specialist to support every CCC across our region, all right? So we're keeping an internal list, and then we're sharing that. As we, you know, we'll share it at the state level, we'll certainly share it with other partners. We're hearing from national organizations that are very interested in learning what are some of the complete count committees, because they want to help support and provide resources where they can.
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, Bita. Good.
Just holding. Holding. Okay, I'll do it. Thank you for your presentation and for everything that you're doing. I've now had the pleasure of speaking on many panels with Jeff, and he's always really incredible and informative. I have a specific question around the phases that you outlined, in trying to sort of understand how you imagine, or if you can, kind of dive in deeply between particularly the awareness and the motivation phase, in thinking about sort of what takes place in those phases, and if you all will be investing, as I understand in the past, that you have in marketing, and kind of what that looks like, and how you'll be deciding where you're doing those investments, and to your point of coordination, sort of making sure that there's consistency in what's happening across the board.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. Thank you. So with the awareness phase, first off, regarding the resources and the tools we'll be providing. So we'll have a national media contract, and their task with developing all the resource kits, social media kits, we'll be sharing those with all of our partners. So we have a partnership toolkit online now. That will continue to grow. Right now, we have things in just English and Spanish. We're going to grow the number of languages, we're going to grow the content, so we'll have specific things for the awareness phase. I see the awareness phase as really, that's when we're showing people what the envelope's going to look like when they get it. That's going to be talking about the internet-first versus internet-choice, so people aren't surprised if they get a package in the mail and it doesn't have a paper form. We'll talk about what the website looks like, you know, go through, these are what the questions are, toll-free numbers, in case you see something that doesn't seem right, because there will be scams, there always are scams around censuses. So that's what I see in the awareness phase. And then when we get to the motivation phase, that's where we can take action. That's where the public can take action. So that's maybe holding an event to say, hey, everyone, did you get your form in the mail? You know, why don't you come on down? We're having an event at the local library, and for those of you who don't have the ability to fill it out, or don't want to fill it out on your smartphone, come down to the library, and the local mayor or the county executives are going to talk about what the census means to the community and the billions of dollars, you know, for all the federally-funded programs. So that'll kind of be the motivation phase. And then, again, the reminder phase, even though we're knocking on doors in mid-May, the online system will be available through the end of July. So one of the things we learned in the 2018 census test is when we go out and visit and no one's there or they don't answer their door, we leave a little, kind of a little sticker that says, hey, we visited. Oh, by the way, here's your 12-digit census ID. You can still go online and fill it out, and we found a lot of people would do that because they don't want us coming back knocking on their door. So that's kind of what the reminder phase is. We still need to let the public know, yes, the census is out there, they're going to be knocking on doors. If you don't want them knocking, go online, fill out your form, or call the toll-free number, or if you have a paper form, to fill it out.
Very quickly, on the same note, do you have a marketing budget for New York State?
So we don't, regardless... So we don't, regarding the national media campaign and marketing, that is a national budget. Everything goes through the contract. So they had their vendor day April 3. I believe it's, and I can share this information with the commissioners, they videotaped their webcasts nationally, and then the RFP process has begun and goes through May 17. So this is the time for local media markets, if they want to get a piece of that large national campaign to do it. In locally, regionally, what we'll be doing, of course, we'll be working with complete count committees who may have resources that they want to use, but it'll be our partnership program. That's when we'll be going and doing local events, boots-on-the-ground type of activities to help promote the census.
Jeff, just for the record, because you mentioned it in Sullivan County, what is the total amount budgeted for the national campaign that states have access to?
Yeah, it's over $500 million for the national budget.
And just to follow up, and I'll turn over to the other commissioners, you, on hiring folks, is there a certain target, a number of people on Suffolk and Nassau that you're wishing to hire here, and how do we get that process started? I know this was a topic of concern in Rochester, for instance, that you felt like there would be not enough people to actually, even if you wanted to hire them, there wouldn't be enough people eligible.
Yeah. So I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that, and I will provide that to the committee. But we can give counts by counties on what our recruiting goal is. And again, our recruiting goal is a little bit different from how many people we hire. We always over-recruit, because we have a funnel effect where people drop off throughout the process. But I can provide both numbers, what the number of bodies we expect to hire, number of humans we expect to hire, as well as our recruiting goal for each county.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a question. So I've attended a lot of these presentations in the community, and I've been speaking with representatives from complete count committees from across the state. One thing I've noticed is that complete count committees are not all created equal. There are definitely places where they seem to be very robust, with lots of municipals and other local government support, and in other places, that infrastructure doesn't exist. And I've seen from some of those members of complete count committees, they feel like there's definitely a capacity there to help educate stakeholders, to work on messaging. But I have, but I've heard concern from them, and I share that same concern, that there is not the capacity there to move from that messaging stage to the motivating, or whatever, that more in-depth work, some of those things that community-based organizations and libraries have been discussing recently. Is a complete count, is complete count committee the solution? Like, is that it, or is there other work to be done outside of this?
No, there's definitely other work. And I think, you know, even if they form a complete count committee, providing input, maybe they don't have the ability to create tools themselves, but they can select tools from the toolkit that should be used for their community. So they're telling the census, if you're going to message something, this is what it needs to be, you know? And then we're using our partnership program, you know, we're using our people who are knocking on doors, we're using our recruiting assistants, whatever resources the Census Bureau has available to get the word out in the areas in which they think it is. And then if we, you know, again, if we have the ability to do any type of media, as of right now, we have no budget, but in the event we do, that's where we would look to target in areas in where resources are lacking.
So in areas where maybe there isn't municipal support, or funding, or infrastructure, that would be a target for your, the federal census workers to step up and provide additional resources?
Yeah. Or work, maybe, maybe there's not a complete count committee, but maybe we're working with all the local churches in the area. Maybe we're working with local businesses or libraries, and we're hosting, the Census Bureau is working with, directly with that partner to host an event, you know, more of these singular type things than a group. But we do, that those are exactly the areas that the Census Bureau will need to step up and provide the resources that we have available. Dr. Simmons?
Good afternoon, Jeff, and again, happy to see you every week. In Brooklyn, we're going to be having a complete count activity, and we want to replicate that map you had of that tract. Is that, we can find that on the Response Outreach Mapper?
Yes.
Okay. That's a question. Fine.
Yeah, and we can take a look at some of the tracts in Brooklyn, and point out some of the ones that may be the most unique that we want to highlight. Send you some examples in you-
Send it quickly.
Yep, we will.
Thank you.
Good. Jeff, please, please stay there, just in case the commissioners have any more questions for you, if you don't mind. I'd now like to turn it over to the presenters from Suffolk County. I think we'll all present, and then we'll reserve questions at the end, so everybody can get their questions. And I'd like to turn it over first to Sol Marie Jones.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Good afternoon. I want to just thank the commission, the co-chairs, and our wonderful county executive, Steve Balone. Great, 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 great.
Not paying anyone.
For this opportunity to talk with you all about the role of the Long Island Community Foundation and census mobilization on Long Island and across the state. And just for the record, I want to say that we had nine, and now I think it's 10, new Suffolk residents. So let's make sure, because I did hear that, I think that it was Mr. Jim Melautris who said that you're going to stay here on Long Island. So that's 10 new residents, four, we're counting you, that's it. We're going back.
So.
So I also want to just say a really big thank you to Jeff Baylor and his staff at the Census Bureau. I have had nothing but open and good communication and relationship with our regional director. It has been such a help to philanthropy, to be able to actually reach a voice on the other end, and it's him, and get the kind of intel and support and follow-through to actually help us here in our regions. I just really want to thank you for that so very much. So the Long Island Community Foundation is one of two suburban affiliates of the New York Community Trust. And since 1978, along with our charitable donors, we have awarded nearly $180 million, mostly to Nassau and Suffolk community-based organizations that work tirelessly to address community needs and improve the quality of life of our residents, especially our most vulnerable neighbors. First, I want to thank you all, our state legislators, including Senator Martinez and Governor Cuomo, for including $20 million, excuse me, in the budget to support activities for a fair and accurate population count in New York State. We echo the concerns of our nonprofit partners that, given the unprecedented challenges we are facing with this upcoming census, as Senator Martinez described, and which I know that you have heard repeatedly and understand, as one of the hardest-to-count states in the country, New York State needs additional resources to tackle these monumental barriers to achieving an accurate census count. Philanthropy urged the governor to consider $60 million to support community-based organizations, community institutions like libraries and local governments that don't have the resources to do the important outreach and coordinations that they need to do. However, what's even more pressing is that the resources that have been allocated, and we're so appreciative of, are distributed to the community and statewide organizations that have relationships and the expertise to reach the populations that are historically undercounted. I know that you heard from Jen Drake from the Dyson Foundation in Sullivan County about the Census Equity Fund at the New York Community Trust. That's brought together foundations from across the state and individual donors through joint and aligned grant-making to support complete count efforts across the state, in areas with large populations of individuals and groups that are at risk of being undercounted. While I won't repeat what you've already heard, there are a few items I'd like to underscore. Number one, it is important that our grant-making activities be coordinated with the state's grant-making program in order to maximize reach and impact. And we would welcome the opportunity to have those conversations formally, as the state develops its plans for reaching hard-to-count populations and communities. Our goal, you may recall, is to raise $3 million. By June, we should have reached half of that goal. And we're fairly confident, with a lot of hard work, that we will be able to raise the money that we are planning to raise. But obviously, that is not, that is just but a tiny little bit in terms of the need. And so it's really important for us to work together with you as we begin to develop those strategies for outreach. Number two, the foundations that are part of this fund, and that are working on this issue so diligently, have the expertise, infrastructure, and relationships with the nonprofit organizations and other community stakeholders that enable us to get resources to the ground quickly and effectively. And we could use that to help the state reach its grant-making goals. So to that end, I will again recommend that at some point soon, before your grant-making decisions are finalized or your RFP is completed, please do use us to be able to have discussions about how to best use our collective resources. The Long Island Community Foundation has led efforts in census planning on Long Island and across the state, because so much of what we do and care about is informed by census data. Our region's demographics are rapidly changing. In fact, Long Island is projected to be majority-minority before the rest of the state, and our physical and social infrastruc, I'm sorry, before the rest of the country. And our physical and social infrastructure need the appropriate resources to ensure that our region stays vibrant, representative, and that all our residents have opportunity to thrive. Yet misperceptions about our needs and averages that are skewed by pockets of wealth keep our region from getting what we need to adapt and respond in a way that reflects those changes equitably and sustainably. Accurate census data that captures what is happening in our communities will help us get there. Additionally, census data and the resources that it informs is important to our hundreds of donors who support the education, arts, environmental protection, food programs, and other safety net programs, as their generous donations cannot get it done alone. Finally, our largest business association, the Long Island Association, released a report in, showing that in 2013, residents and businesses on Long Island sent $42.5 billion to the federal government and got back $19.4 billion. A more accurate census count can close that gap. We, like most community foundations across the state, have a history of working closely with local governments, regional stakeholders, and our nonprofit sector to address issues of regional significance. On Long Island, we have worked with these partners to respond to disasters like the September 11 terrorist attacks and Superstorm Sandy, to address public health concerns like our opioid epidemic and deteriorating water quality, and on issues like census that will impact everyone. In 2010, the Long Island Community Foundation was one of two regions that hosted a funder collaborative to get an accurate count. New York City was the other. The country was facing some significant challenges then as well. We were in a severe economic recession, ICE raids were at an all-time high, and public sentiment about government was low. Local funders pooled $500,000 with other funding partners, including the New York State Grants Program, which we distributed to 22 trusted Long Island organizations to reach out to undercounted populations. Through complete count committees established with both counties, we established additional support from business and municipal partners, including our health systems, utilities, our bus systems, local television studios, and our malls. In turn, 19 of the 23 census tracts in which the initiative focused its efforts showed increased response rates, including a dramatic 21% increase in Central Islip here in Suffolk County, and a 7% increase in Roosevelt, two of the region's hardest-to-count communities. Conversely, in those communities where we could not support, because we simply didn't have enough funding, we saw declines in response rates at the same levels. This shows the importance of getting adequate resources to community organizations who can really reach the hard-to-count people. We also learned the importance of being flexible with our grants program, and letting groups be creative in developing their strategies. We, local groups that are most trusted don't always have the administrative organization that we and the state requires, but they are best placed to do the work. So we have to think about that and create solutions to get the resources to those groups. And finally, we learned the importance of coordination with other funding sources. As I mentioned, the $500,000 included $335,000 from the local private foundations and community foundations, and the rest of it came from the New York State's, New York State Grant Program. We had, at the time, received 22 really great proposals, but we could only fund 17. So one of the funders took the additional five great proposals, and put in an application to New York State. And as a result of that, we were able to fund all 22, make sure that, you know, more of the two counties were covered, and we had the impact that I shared with you. Both New York City and Long Island showed increases in population in 2010, but in other parts of the region where census efforts were limited or non-existent, there showed population decreases. These population counts were contested by local governments, who indicated that their immigrant populations and other groups weren't properly counted, but the population numbers stood. And as you know, our state lost two congressional seats and billions of dollars. We can and must set the record straight this time. Building on our 2010 experience, LICF has been working to raise awareness and build partnerships. Last year, we encouraged and assisted Nassau and Suffolk to establish complete count committees, which are developing strategies and actions to reach our hard-to-count. We awarded a grant to the Health and Welfare Council, a highly effective umbrella organization for health and human service providers, to work with the counties and the ongoing coordination of the committees. And I have to say that they've been doing a fantastic job, so thank you for that. We are very grateful for the leadership that the county executives, County Executive Laura Corin and County Executive Steve Balone and their staffs are taking on census. They put in tremendous time and effort throughout the LUCA process, and were the second and third counties to establish complete count committees in New York State. Not that we're competitive, but you know, just going to always throw that in there. And obviously, County Executive Balone's understanding of the challenges of getting an accurate census count on Long Island, which has geographies that are like other parts of the state, from urban, suburban, and rural, make his role on this commission invaluable to our region and to the state. And their leadership has also inspired local municipalities to create their own complete count committees, to do the deeper dive that Jeff shared with us about Brentwood, and said that that is a good model, and it's happening. This time around, our community foundation partners across the state are partnering with local governments and nonprofits to do similar things. For example, the Brooklyn Community Foundation assisted the Brooklyn Borough President to establish its complete count committee, and is co-chair of that committee. The Central New York Community Foundation provided a grant to the New York Immigration Coalition to work with their Worker Center of Central New York and Onondaga County to help with the LUCA process, and they have provided a grant to the City of Syracuse to hire a census coordinator that will help them establish a complete count committee. And the Community Foundation of Greater Buffalo is supporting and helping coordinate the complete count committee efforts of both the City of Buffalo and Erie County. And these efforts are helping to support and inspire more activities across the state. And Lauren, to your point about complete count committees that are, that have more capacity versus less capacity, one of the things that we're hoping to do with our grant-making, with our funding, is to perhaps identify some way to make sure that complete count committees have a place to share information, to help each other, to use what's already been established, so that, so that they don't have to necessarily be alone, and/or so that they can have a technical assistance provider to help move that work forward. So we're excited to be a part of the statewide effort that brings together all of our resources to make sure that every resident is fairly counted. As the state continues to develop its grant-making program, we urge them to consider the very real administrative challenges facing some of the most trusted organizations. We're here to share our expertise with you to help in creating and developing your RFP. And we're able to provide a list of potential applicants that would be interested in receiving your RFP. Let's just make sure we get our joint resources to our community groups as quickly as possible, so they can do what they do so effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Turn it over to Vanessa Baird-Streeter.
Hello. Hello, and good afternoon. I'm Vanessa Baird-Streeter, Assistant Deputy County Executive for Suffolk County, the one charged with chairing the Suffolk County Complete Count Committee. I'm very happy to be before you today to talk about some of the activities that we have engaged in, in Suffolk County as a complete count committee. So, in July of 2018, in June and July of 2018, we participated in the LUCA process, so that's the Local Update of Census Address Operation. LUCA provides the only opportunity offered to tribal, state, and local governments to review and comment on the U.S. Census Bureau's residential address list for their jurisdiction prior to the 2020 census. The Census Bureau relies on a complete and accurate address list to reach every living quarters and associated populations for the inclusion in the census. So in the summer of 2018, Suffolk County Information and Technology Department, Performance Management Department, Economic Development and Planning, and Real Property Departments engaged in the LUCA process. After, during the summer of 2018, residential addresses were provided to us by the Census Bureau, and we compared that data with our address point database via automated processes entailing spatial selection and geo-coding. In all processes, we aimed to implement an automated review of the data. However, to ensure full accuracy, we manually reviewed thousands of addresses located within Suffolk County. And then on July 2 of 2018, Suffolk County supplied an additional 9,807 addresses that were not accounted for within the original data sent to us by the census. While this effort may have seemed arduous and tedious, it definitely will ensure a more accurate count for Suffolk County's population- more accurate count for Suffolk County's population and could possibly account for an additional 25,498 people based on our average household size of 2.6 people per household. So the LUCA process definitely was beneficial to Suffolk County. Our Suffolk County census activities to date. In November of 2018, Suffolk County began the planning for its Complete Census Count Committee with initial kickoff meeting with the Long Island Community Foundation. And I cannot say enough that the Long Island Community Foundation really served as the impetus for Suffolk County to begin and establish its Complete Count Committee. The support that they have given us has been amazing, and really, they are the reason why we have a Complete Count Committee within Suffolk County. So thank you very much to the Long Island Community Foundation. After that, the county executive decided to dedicate a part-time staff person and in-kind resources to the effort, and you're looking at that part-time staff person. The initial planning on the creation of the Suffolk County Complete Count Committee was done in collaboration with the Long Island Community Foundation and our funded partner, the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island, throughout December and January. On January 30, County Executive Balone announced the members of the Suffolk County Complete Count Committee, which totaled over 50 individuals and organizations committed to census efforts and census outreach. On February 13, we held our first meeting of the Suffolk County Complete Count Committee with over 50 members in attendance. We had presentations from Steve Romuluski, Director of CUNY Mapping Service, Jennifer Albert, who was our Long Island Partnership Specialist, my comrade right next to me, Sol Marie Jones, the Long Island Community Foundation, talking about the importance and the reason why they are so committed to the census efforts, and then Rebecca Sanon, President and CEO of the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island, to talk about how they were going to be the logistical convener of both Nassau and Suffolk Counties' Complete Count Committees. After-- and then on February 28, I know Jeff talked about this a little bit, but we are a little ahead of the game in Suffolk County. So in Suffolk County, we held our first Census 2020 Job Fair and not-for-profit training at Suffolk Community College in collaboration with our Department of Labor. We had over 80 individuals apply for jobs, and literally, that was between a three-hour stint from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. We had 80 individuals come and apply for jobs from various ethnic backgrounds, various cultures, and various languages spoken, which is extremely important. Prior to the Job Fair, we also held a technical assistance training for executive directors of not-for-profit organizations to provide them the technical assistance that they need to be able to assist their constituents in applying for census jobs, which is extremely important because we want to ensure that the people that are working on census in our communities are from our communities. Then they're committed, they're valued, they're vested, and they can serve as ambassadors even before they start their actual census work, but they can continually serve as ambassadors for Suffolk County, which is extremely important, and we heard that loud and clear from our Complete Census Count Committee members. So Jeff, thank you very much, but we're a little ahead of the game here.
Not that we're competitive.
Exactly. Not that we're competitive, though. In addition, so we feel that it's important, with Suffolk County being labeled as one of the fourth hardest-to-count counties in New York State, we must do all that we can to engage stakeholders to ensure that we obtain an accurate count for our population and our region. So we've created a resource for Suffolk County residents. We've created a landing page on our Suffolk County website. It's our Census 2020 landing page, which provides our residents and Complete Count Committee members one location to find census-related information. Our Complete Count Committee Subcommittee membership is listed on our landing page. Hard-to-count maps with instructions on interpreting data is listed on our page. A multitude of outreach resources for hard-to-count populations is listed on our page, which is definitely very helpful to the nine subcommittees that we've created under our Complete Count Committee. Links to census job opportunities, and we take every opportunity, and the county executive knows, we edit his talking points at every given time so that when it is appropriate, he is talking about census, and he has been doing that since January of 2019, speaking about census and the importance for people to respond to census. And then there's also information in reference to our contacts for census partners, our Long Island Partnership Specialist, as well as my collaborators here from the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island and from the Long Island Community Foundation. And lastly, but not least, this is-- we worked with, at the request of Suffolk County, and that really means myself, we created this legislative district map, and we asked Steve Romuluski to, in collaboration with Suffolk IT, Suffolk County IT, to help us create this map. And we thought that it was extremely important because basically, it is an overlay of our legislative districts. So if you look at the numbers that are represented, those are our legislative districts that are represented, so that our legislators are given the information that they need in order to serve and reach out to their constituencies. As well as this information is very important for our community-based organizations that are located within the legislative districts to understand the information and the hard-to-count areas within Suffolk County and within particular legislative districts. In addition to providing the legislative district overlay on Suffolk County's hard-to-count map, which is calculated based on the 2010 census mail return rate, we will provide legislators and our community with additional information for each one of their districts, inclusive of demographic characteristics for populations at risk of being undercounted. For each legislative district, we have what the renter population is for households. We have the population for children under five in hard-to-count tracts. We have households with no internet subscription in hard-to-count tracts, and we also have households with cell-only internet access in hard-to-count tracts. Why that is so important is because the first round of completing the census is going to be online. So therefore, we need to know, as well as our legislators need to know, how many people in that particular-- in your particular district don't have access to the internet? So then we can work collaboratively with our library systems and our outreach community organizations to ensure that people have access to a computer to be able to fill out the census. In addition, note that in 2010, and you'll see the east end of the map, but note that in 2010, for most of Suffolk's east end, there was no track-level return rate. The reason is, these tracts were enumerated directly in person by the Census Bureau. The majority of Suffolk County's east end is considered hard-to-count, given how they were enumerated in 2010. All of this information will be invaluable information to our communities, our community-based organizations, our elected officials, who will be tasked with ensuring that people know about the census, they feel comfortable with the questions that are going to be asked, they know that they can fill it out online, and that their information is protected by Title 13. It is just so important of the information that we share and that we message to ensure people feel comfortable when March comes around of 2020, it's not going to be a problem. Of course, they're going to respond to the census because they understand that it's about bringing back the dollars and the dollars that are appropriate for our communities. For Suffolk County, we were actually the seventh lowest responding county in New York State in 2010. That is not going to be acceptable in 2020. So with that being said, I thank you for the opportunity to present to you today what Suffolk County has engaged in in reference to our Complete Count Committee, and we will continue to do all the work that we can to ensure that we get a fair and accurate count in Suffolk County. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. First, just editorial comment, you're doing a great job down here. It's a real model for the rest of the state, and I asked our staff, who's helping the committee, just to get your webpage, we'd like to start adding these to the state pages so people can learn from one another, because what you're doing here is really phenomenal, and it is because the county executive is also great. But you're great, too.
I can tell you, Vanessa, we'll go knock on doors herself to make sure everyone is counted.
Yes. I have no doubt that she will be doing a lot on her own. So thank you, Vanessa. I'd like to turn now to Rebecca Sanon for her presentation.
Thank you, first of all, for your service on this commission, and welcome to Long Island. We are so happy that you're here. To our great county executive in Suffolk, thank you for being a fierce voice on Long Island to ensure that Long Island, with every measure, gets its fair share. And quite frankly, that's what we're here to talk about today, getting our fair share. I'm Rebecca Sanon. I'm the President and CEO of the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island. We are an umbrella organization. We work with hundreds of nonprofits across the region on every area of health and human services. We also partner with our county executives, our controllers, our local elected officials, our superintendents of schools. Just this morning, I was presenting to the Suffolk County Superintendent's Association about the census for 2020. We work with our libraries, we work with all community partners. In partnering with our county executives, the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island has been leading this region in census preparation activities. As one of the first regions with two standing and fiercely active complete count committees, we are partnering with government, towns, villages, libraries, community-based organizations, and so importantly, our school districts, to make sure that we get out the count. We know we need effective public-private partnerships to get an accurate count. This is why I am so proud of the work that we've already begun to accomplish on Long Island through the Nassau and Suffolk Complete Count Committees, where we've engaged nearly 300 active leaders from community-based organizations, government, labor, business, faith-based organizations, our 124-- yes, we have 124 school districts on Long Island, the utility companies. We have every sector of Long Island coming together to build a campaign, a Get Out the Count campaign. And we have 12 subcommittees. We've actually had, I think, 26 subcommittee meetings in my office in the last two weeks, and I kid you not. And they represent communication experts, local government, faith-based communities of every kind, immigrant populations. Again, that word immigrant sometimes is thought of in a very singular way, and we have a diverse immigrant population on Long Island. People of color, business executives, senior citizen experts, early childhood leaders, and education leaders. And we have been out there raising awareness, I would say fiercely, holding press conferences, talking on national radio, meeting with associations, doing everything we can because the urgency is now. So to my friends in government on the commission, and many of you represent government, you know what it is to get out the vote. We have built an army of census ambassadors working together to get a complete count from Elmont to Montauk. The groundwork has been laid, the bones are in place, and now, we need meat on those bones. You can't run a political campaign without resources, right? In fact, one of the first to-dos in running a campaign is what? It's raising money. And we can't run a Get Out the Count campaign and deliver results without an appropriate infusion of resources. So we all know the Fiscal Policy Institute said New York needed $40 million to be effective. What did the state land? The state budget landed on $20 million, actually, up to $20 million. We are committed to raising the dollars in that gap, but we need every single one of the $20 million not to be re-appropriated, as we all know it can be, but to be laser-like focused on census activities. And I want to share a few of the challenges that we face here on Long Island. You know, I think first and foremost, in this census, the anti-immigrant climate, with shifting immigration policies in Washington, D.C., is something we need to be concerned about in a way that we never have been before. I mentioned that we're an umbrella organization for the health and human services sector. We get calls every day of folks dropping off of WIC, dropping off of SNAP, dropping off of Medicaid. Over a million moms and babies in the last year have dropped off a WIC, the Nutritional Security Program for Children Zero to Five. If people are giving up food for fear of scrutiny, for fear of deportation, for fear of dissolution, do we really think they're going to be excited to give the government information about where they live and who they are? No. Second challenge is money. The federal government has allocated less money this time around. The state government, we're very grateful for the dollars, but it's less than the need. And on Long Island, our-- one of our big funders for census work in the past was Hagadorn Foundation, and those dollars are no longer here. Another challenge is the digital nature of this census. The first contact is going to be, as was said before, a card that says, "Here's your link, go online and fill out this census." That can create all sorts of challenges for folks, including just a barrier in saying, "I don't want to go online and share my information in this universe in which people are hacked on a regular basis." And then on Long Island, we have a very sort of unique situation in the amount of unaffordable housing that we have. What that means, you know, Vanessa talked about the LUCA process, and the county did a phenomenal job in identifying houses where people live, but if houses are unregistered, right, then they're not getting-- they're not getting that contact from the Census Bureau. And what does that mean? Let's say I'm a landlord, and I have 15 households in a single-family home, because they're all over the place here on Long Island, and I get that census contact, am I going to go online and count the 15 people that shouldn't live there? Absolutely not. And so we have a huge process in front of us to get people to self-select, to call the census and say, "I live here and I want to be counted," in the midst of this time of such anti-immigrant rhetoric and fear. So we have a significant challenge ahead of us. And Title 13 does protect information from being shared with ICE and Homeland officials-- sorry, Homeland Security officials, but also with county and town governments, any entity. So landlords, we want to encourage landlords to know they don't need to fear, you know, any kind of challenge to their permitting if they fill it out accurately, but we know that the challenge there is significant. Long Island, despite our significant, complex poverty, people often like to say we have pockets of poverty, we really have pockets of wealth. And the challenges that we face, we are the flickering flame that continues to provide light to our state through our contributions to the rest of the state. We are a region filled with innovation, educational excellence, and recreational bliss. We need to ensure that this flame, that this light, the opportunity here, isn't extinguished for any child or any family. And here's the thing about the challenges that we're facing at this moment in history. The truth is, we're living in a war zone. The war is not on Long Island or Rochester or Erie County. The war is between New York State and Washington, D.C. New York receives over $53 billion through 16 large federal assistance programs that are distributed based on the decennial census. We are talking about more than $33 billion in Medicaid and children's health insurance programs to provide basic health care to our families and so much more for our schools, our roads, and our infrastructure. Do we want, the question, do we want our communities to be healthy, educated, and safe? Because that is the question. If so, then we need every one of those up to $20 million in New York. In New York, we have 5.3 million people on Medicaid, a little under 700,000 children on the children's health insurance program. Some of you might have, you know, seen the recent measles outbreak. Certainly, we don't want children not to have health insurance. And 2.7 million New Yorkers, many elderly, disabled, veterans, or children on SNAP. An undercount means less dollars for these programs. An undercount means New Yorkers most in need lose. And I could talk about Long Island and how we send more money to Albany than we get back, but that really wouldn't help me engage those of you who live north of the Thragsnag Bridge. So I'm going to continue to talk about something that we all can get behind. New York State is under a vicious and devastating assault from policies that are eviscerating our way of life from Buffalo to Montauk. I'm talking about salt. This attack on our economic stability as a state is having excruciating consequences. A second assault involves our shifting demographics. This shift on Long Island has been noticed in D.C. We've had over 10,000 unaccompanied children move to Long Island since 2014, and from visits to Long Island to mentions in national speeches, we have been targeted by the anti-immigrant rhetoric and sweeping generalizations about crime and gangs. It is critical that New York stand up for Long Island against these attacks. We need to stand together for who we are as New Yorkers, and we know who we are, and we will not allow our neighbors to be made invisible. And as government leaders, you know that we are effectively the purse strings for other states to be funded, and we are in the position at this moment of having to ask ourselves, do we want potholes filled in Texas, or do we want them filled on the Long Island Expressway? Do we want children to have health insurance in California or in Monroe County? Do we want our schools to be resourced in Long Island and Buffalo or perhaps New Jersey? And of course, I wish that every state has what it needs, but we can't sit idly by while the rhetoric in D.C. eviscerates the future of New York. New Yorkers won't stand for it. New York is one of 12 states where more than a 2% undercount could result in reduced representation in D.C. Can you honestly imagine New York being less represented in D.C. given what we see today? And for 10 years? Census sets a precedent for 10 years of representation and 10 years of funding. So what does that mean to you, the commission that is charged with recommendations on how to ensure a full and complete count? Here's what it means. Here's the passionate plea that I leave you with today. We all know that the governor, the assembly, and the senate are committed to New York getting its fair share. There is no question about that. But we also know that the funding for census activity right now is precarious. Up to $20 million can mean a lot of things, and its current vessel is one that could allow for reappropriation. I can tell you, as I stand here today, that in New York City, a region with much more need but also with much more integrated systems than Long Island, imagine one school district, integrated government, public transportation, and the like. The mayor is investing in census from city dollars, and in fact, some of the city organizations are asking the mayor for a $40 million investment just for New York City. Whatever that investment turns out to be, we need you to factor it into your regional funding decisions. We need every dollar of that $20 million in the rest of state, and we need fair allocation, and we need to move. The sense of urgency couldn't be more clear. The prospect of an accurate 2020 count is challenging when New York is under assault. So we need to move, and we need to get the money to community organizations that are trusting. trusted and can do the work. Most simply cannot do it without funding, no matter how committed they are to the notion that every human being, every family, every school district, and every community counts. When you want to put out a flame, when you want to extinguish the light, you deprive it of its oxygen supply. Washington, D.C.'s efforts to ensure an undercount are akin to stopping New York's oxygen supply. The most basic needs that we have for food security, healthcare, disaster planning, roads, and infrastructure will be invisible without an accurate count. And what is perhaps most insidious is that the efforts to stymie an accurate count, this war zone between D.C. and New York that I referenced earlier, there aren't clear battlefields. The battle is constant. It's slow, and it's a progressing crisis that leaves those of us committed to our region left with one answer: Build an army. Build the groundswell in every corner. Build a movement, because New Yorkers cannot be made invisible by these endless assaults on everything that we value. Fear nurtures an undercount. An undercount nurtures heightened segregation in a region that is already more segregated than most across the country. Segregation perpetuates separate and unequal opportunity. This in a time when our nation may be getting a deputy attorney general who won't respond to whether or not Brown v. Board of Education was decided correctly. This is real. This is war. The war is about protecting, honoring, and nurturing New York's family. The two Complete Count Committees that you heard about today are committed to just this task. And I leave you with this. Martin Luther King once said, "Wait has almost always meant never." Well, we can't wait any longer, and never is not something we can embrace. Now is the time for choosing our path forward as one New York. Now is the time for ensuring that our state is not erased, made invisible, undercounted, underrepresented, or underfunded as policies in D.C. seek to do. Now is the time for New York to shine its light and claim its place in this very dark moment in history as a leader it has often been in times of crisis. And we need you to make that happen. You have the power to do so. So I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Last, but surely not least, then, good luck after that speech. Andrew, you don't have to testify today if you do not want to. We would forgive, we would forgive her, but Andrew Mauve, who is the chief of staff of Nassau County Comptroller's Office.
Yeah, true, but I'm definitely not going to be able to do that. So my name is Andrew. I have the incredibly unfortunate job of going after Rebecca from the Nassau County Comptroller's Office. So in the comptroller's office, we like to count things. So the census is near and dear to our hearts. And over the past year, we've been putting out reports on data on Long Island, talking about how we can best deliver services to what we have found to be a rapidly changing Nassau County and Long Island. We are getting significantly older and more diverse. As Sol said, Long Island will be majority-minority by the early 2030s. So that gets us to the census. One of the big challenges we see, as we've said, is the push towards a digital census. 23% of Nassau County's population lives in a hard-to-count community, and according to the American Community Survey, over 10% of Nassau County either does not have internet access or relies upon dial-up service. So that's a big challenge. With so many resources, as Rebecca eloquently said, driven to Long Island based on census data, this is our one shot for the next decade. So it's incredibly important and incredibly big deal to make sure that we get the services Long Islanders deserve. We must make sure that our community partners, like Rebecca, get all of the resources that they need so that they can continue to do exactly what she just did. So I think I'm going to leave it at that and let Rebecca's words carry for everybody. Thank you.
Smart man, smart man.
Thank you, Andrew. Turn it over to questions for the panels from the commissioners.
So I'll pose a still panel, but maybe Rebecca, since you're representing the community-based organizations. This commission has heard literally hours of testimony from community-based organizations, libraries, other partners, speaking from their heart about why this is so important, about the work that they want to do, and about the funding and the resources that they need to do that. Yet, there still seems to be some suspicion by, from decision-makers at the state, that that request for funding is actually not legitimate, that perhaps these are opportunists trying to get rich off of this effort or something like, I'm not really sure what the resistance is. Do you feel like this is an opportunity for community-based organizations to get rich, or is this really the funds that are needed to do this work?
Thank you for that question. I think there is a huge misperception about community-based organizations in general. You know, when you think about the person who cuts down your trees, right, when they don't get paid, they just stop cutting down the trees. But we know nonprofits and health and human service agencies that take care of our most vulnerable people can't close the door when the county or the state or some entity is late in funding. And I think because of that, there's this sort of bleeding-heart perspective that, hey, community organizations can just get it done because they're already in community. And here's the thing, community-based organizations, particularly here on Long Island, are working with, you know, skeleton budgets and doing so much to reach communities and to do what they need to do, but they can't take from that infrastructure to do something else. You know, as I said, we're working with over 300 partners right now, and every single day I get phone calls saying, "Rebecca, I have this great idea, but I don't have the staff to do it. I don't have the resources to do it. I don't have the money to print the materials to translate this into a language that our community needs." So it is a huge misnomer, a huge misunderstanding about the sector. Quite frankly, and I say this respectfully, the nonprofit sector needs to drive health and human services. Right now, the model is that the nonprofit sector responds to government on health and human services, but the folks who are on the ground, working with people, need to be the ones that are driving this effort. And there is no question that the need is there and that there is no get-rich scheme. I can certainly assure you of that. But that folks who understand what the census stakes are, quite frankly, I say this to parents every day, the single most important thing you can do for your child is fill out the census. Because if I have a two-year-old at home, I'm not going to have a chance again until she's done with elementary school to count her. That means my school district loses money for Title I, Title III, for school lunches, for special education grants. There is nothing more important to our communities and the communities CBOs serve than census. And we need the dollars in order to do the work.
And the work that you've been able to do so far, organizing all these partners, was the result of initial funding, right, from the foundation? Is that correct?
Generous funding from the Long Island Community Foundation has enabled us to do, you know, the initial frameworking of the Complete Count Committees, and it was extremely generous, and we're extremely grateful, but quite frankly, it ran out in Week 1 because of the amount of work that it actually takes. You know, I have staff of 14, and I have four people who are almost completely dedicated to managing this project right now between Nassau and Suffolk County and running these Complete Count Committees.
Sol Marie, just to understand, your request is not that philanthropy replaces state funding, but that philanthropy perhaps is a mechanism for distributing state funds, right?
Yes, and that we, yes, as a mechanism, and also that we can amplify what the state is doing through our grant-making.
To leverage those dollars.
Absolutely. And the point that Rebecca made as it pertains to the grant that we gave her, that I think is the best example of how nonprofits operate with grant money. From a foundation's perspective, I always see that for every dollar that we give them, we have to get probably $10, maybe more, dollars back in their time and their service and their work. And that's probably everyone in this room.
And then, when I read the appropriation language, it seemed to me that this $20 million, as it is right now, is not necessarily designated for community-based organizations. Did you, you had that same, you had that same understanding?
Have a lot of concern about that.
Commissioner Simmons?
So anyone on the magnificent panel, oh, where did that gentleman go? Including the comptroller's office.
He ran. He ran really fast.
Could you give us a brief, very brief overview of who the populations are in those hard-to-count areas of Nassau and Suffolk? And I don't have any problem with your naming towns or villages.
The hard-to-count populations that we've experienced for Suffolk County, I can't speak really to Nassau County, but Suffolk County, we definitely had an undercount in our zero to five. So that was a large portion of our undercount and hard-to-count community demographic was zero to five. Also, we have communities in pockets. So if we talk about Brentwood, Centralized Slip, Wyandanch, the East End, we have a large migrant community on the East End, our South Shore, those are areas where we have individuals that...
I know that you know who's in those communities, but I'd like you to tell us who's in those communities.
Suffolk County, our Hispanic population is about 18.4%. So those communities represent a large Hispanic population as well as people of color. And when we say people of color, that's a demographic of African Americans, people of African ancestry, so not necessarily African-American, but Caribbean-American, African-born as well. Zero to four, zero to five, as I indicated, all demographics and populations in reference to the zero to five. And I'll give you a particular example where Rebecca was speaking about the zero to five and undercount. I work closely with the Wyandanch community, and the Wyandanch community for 2010 had a 4% population for zero to five. That is inaccurate, meaning therefore, the response rates to the census were not accurate. So what happens is, is that's in 2010. Their population has been growing. That's a particular district in Suffolk County where their population has been growing. They, because of the basis of the information provided in 2010, they have a growing population. There's zero to five, so their pre-K and K have outgrown the building that they're in. However, the district couldn't prepare accordingly because they didn't have the numbers to start with. So therefore, the district now has to rent out space in another school district, which is an adjacent school district, as an annex for their pre-K and K, costing that district additional funds in the hundreds of thousands of dollars each year, and they couldn't plan accordingly based on census data and the underreporting of census data.
Technically, when you say zero to five are not counted, which I conceptually get, are adults filling out the form and just leaving them off, or is the entire household is not reporting?
So there are issues concerning adults just not counting those that are zero to five, which, that's part of my family. So if my son, he was zero to five in 2010, I would have put him and counted him in my count. The other thing is, is that it also is exacerbated because in those hard-to-count communities, you have a large population of zero to five. So they're not being counted because they're not necessarily responding to the census. So it actually ends up being exacerbated, a family's not necessarily responding, including their zero to five, and then you have those communities that are hard-to-count communities already, and then they have a large population of zero to five that are undercounted.
Children are also...
The messaging, I mean, so it's two different messages. You must fill, this is why you fill out your census.
Correct.
But don't forget you have a child in your home.
And then also think about when Rebecca spoke to renters and houses that are not necessarily legal dwellings. You have families that are living in those homes. So that exacerbates it as well. The homeowner may be filling out, but they're only, if they happen to reside in the property, they're filling it out for their household but not the other households that are included. And most of the time, those households have individuals that are zero to five.
Children are also overrepresented as a group living in poverty, and so there's a lot of moving and complex living environments.
Question?
Thank you.
The commission question. Mr. Colorado?
This works. So good afternoon. So bravo, by the way, to all of you. And I was gonna, I actually texted Rebecca, like, "Bravo. Great, thank you for your leadership." It's obvious that Long Island is in amazing hands, Vanessa, Sol Marie, and obviously Rebecca, who I know for a while, and that's great. So it's essential to have strong leadership, but to Rebecca's point, I think the point that's been made across the board, certainly the foundation has made the point, that we need resources. And just as a point of example, California allocated in its state budget $90 million, $90.3 million. Now, it's double the population of New York, but philanthropy has also stepped up and committed to another $30 million, which already they've put forward $10 million. That's $120 million for the state of California. We have put forward $20 million. I'm really super excited that the foundation here is looking at $3 million. I think that's important, but so much more money is needed. And I think to your point, Rebecca, around the underfunding, the undercapitalization, and the under sort of resource aspect of the work of our CBOs and how we do a lot of the work without funding, but leadership is not enough. It's the point that I want to emphasize that you have all made, that leadership is not enough. Obviously, I think the, you know, the know-how, the expertise, the sort of the work that's been going on over the past couple of months speaks of itself, but at some point, the rubber hits the road, and it's like where the resources are going to come from in order to be able to do this work. So I think it's incumbent upon, obviously, all of us, certainly the work that's happening on the ground, to figure out where more resources are going to come from. And obviously, we are incredibly excited that the county executive here understands how important that is. But it is really about the private-public partnerships that have to develop over a period of time. We have a lot of companies that are doing business here that obviously have a stake in Long Island. We need to make sure that all of them step up. And it is, in fact, what we are doing in New York City. Rebecca, you mentioned $40 million. We've actually asked the city council in New York City to put forward $50 million to up what the mayor is proposing and really sort of get us to a much higher level. We need to figure out here, how do we get local dollars infused into local communities, but also how do we get our businesses more involved in making sure that they step up? And the implications, honestly, the implications of not doing that are dramatic. California gets it. I was just in Chicago last week, and they've put, just for the city of Chicago, $25 million. And so we are behind when it comes to resource allocation in our state, certainly in our localities. And so, you know, we look forward to working with you on that front.
That's great. Thank you so much. And I would just add, you know, we, well, first of all, you certainly made my point about the pothole, I should have said California, not Texas, being filled instead of Long Island Expressway. But we have a business subcommittee that's chaired by the LIA, Matt Cohen and Kevin Law from the LIA, as well as Mitch Pally from Libby. And we have a lot of business executives at the table, including our utility companies and others. But I think there needs to be, you know, a groundswell of pushing the business community, to your point, to really step up when it comes to those private dollars. At the same time, I just say, you know, because I'm sitting before a commission, every one of those state dollars is needed regardless, because to, you know, Jose's point that he shared so eloquently, there's a serious amount of money that is needed to do this work effectively, and never has it been harder than this time in history to do this kind of work. So thank you, Jose.
So the question of resources has come up again and again and again. Suffolk County, under the great leadership of County Executive Bologna, has been identified as a best practice in this work. And just want to have you talk briefly, Vanessa, if you can, about the resources you have and how you might be stretching dollars, engaging partnerships, because there will be many communities across our state whose budgets are already stretched to the limit. And as much as, you know, municipal officials in those places might get it, they're going to have a hard time coming up with additional resources. It sounds like you all have recruited some very creative partnerships to be able to do some of the work that you're doing, and if you could talk about that, that'd be appreciated.
Correct. So I am a resource that the county executive definitely highlighted in reference to working with census activities. And there are in-kind resources that we are working with, in working with the Department of Labor and having the Department of Labor staff our census job opportunities, looking at individuals within government to give of their gifts and talents as we look at census outreach opportunities. But really, the biggest and the most important opportunity is for the collaboration that's taking place here. So that collaboration that's taking place with the Long Island Community Foundation and the Health and Welfare Council, that is really invaluable. That is a model that should be used within the state that we are all working together because then we can rely on each other's resources to be able to assist and help the census outreach efforts. One of the other things, and I think someone a little bit later is going to be talking about this, but the governor has a shared services initiative that was implemented in 2016, 2017, and we are using, Suffolk County has kind of been a leader in reference to our shared services initiatives and working with other municipalities in reference to collaborating and coordinating our purchases. But there's also a portal that has been created, and that portal shares information with all of the local municipalities that have signed on to our shared services. We're using that portal as an opportunity to be able to... to be able to share census information, to direct work that the local municipalities are going to be engaging in based on census. So it's, it's a portal that's created, it's a, it's a, it's a group that's already in existence that we're tapping into. So I think what Suffolk County is looking at, and most likely Nassau County as well, is looking at those opportunities that already exist and capitalizing on those opportunities for us to continue to push census information, continue to educate in reference to census, and use the resources and the skill and talent of individuals that are in Suffolk County government and collaborating organizations to be able to promote the census, ensure that we have an accurate and fair count, and ensure that we're all educated so that we know that the census is going to bring dollars back here. So therefore, that's why we have to participate. So it's really capitalizing on what we have as in-kind services and the collaboration of these two organizations here.
Just to build on the mayor's point, then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mustafi. One of the things I think Rebecca mentioned was translational services. I think it would be great to get a list for the committee of core things and services that community organizations provide. For instance, that's one area I think that we could eliminate some of the unnecessary costs, so you could focus on other things. For instance, there's an executive order where this, every state agency has to do translational services. Now, the whole host of language, language access is a huge issue that Secretary Rosado and Commissioner Riordan were part of. At the city level, too, there's a city, I think, executive order or city law doing the same thing. So in those cases, you, I wouldn't want you to focus your time on that. We should give that to people who do that as a matter of ministerial act, so you can then focus on some of those core areas. So I think getting the list to us of core functions to see if we can figure out ways of then allowing some of those activities to be taken off your plate or enhanced, those activities would be helpful. So, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Mustafi.
Sure. Just to follow up on that, I would say that we, yes, we have local authority that governs us to provide interpretation and translation services that require a hefty budget in order to do year in and year out. So agencies that do do that work, and my office actually has oversight over them, are always assessing what they need from a budgetary standpoint to be able to do that. It is very expensive, and it does require ensuring that you have increased budget if you're going to see an increased amount of translations. But yes, smart to see if there are efficient ways to ensure the CBOs aren't bogged down with those processes. I would additionally ask, you raised obviously an issue and question that's near and dear to me, and the thinking that I do, I have to do in our office, but also some of the thinking that we've been doing in terms of kind of why, why dollars are needed at a greater rate or level. One being, of course, the climate that we're in, and the other being the way in which, with the addition of the citizenship question and other kind of anti-immigrant policies, as well as kind of general racist, racist climate that many are operating under, kind of what does that mean in terms of the, the role or what do you think is needed to overcome those challenges, recognizing that some will be surmountable and some won't? But that, in, in many ways, it requires a different approach to the census itself, and maybe speaks a little bit to some of the resource questions.
Great, great question. A couple of different things. You know, I think when it comes to the anti-immigrant climate, you know, so for example, one of my biggest fears about what's going to happen, we're going to hit March of 2020, and some of these hard-to-count communities, that there's going to be ICE raids. You know, this, this is what I'm planning for. And that's why my, you know, words were very intentional around building an army, because an army is always on alert, an army is always prepared, an army is always preparing. I think that in order to be effective in communities where people are so afraid that they're giving up food in order to, you know, keep their families together, or not sending their children to school, or not leaving their homes, I mean, these are real issues, and we need to validate that. And the way that you reach communities is not by doing PSAs, you know, with fancy people, by getting into communities and getting people who are the trusted messengers. It's not just about the message, it's about the messenger. So it's, you know, who's the person in my community that people call when they have a child who is sick and don't have a doctor, to say, what do I do? Who is the person that people call when they're in their darkest moments? Because that's the person who needs to be a spokesperson. So it's identifying influencers in communities at the very, very grassroots level, and empowering them with the resources to be able to get the message out. And I think just, you know, and Vanessa, who has a really strong communications background, often says this, and it's so true. It used to be that you needed to get a message across about seven times, right? When you think of how we used to campaign in elections, right? You, you had to hit a door seven times. With these things, people are overloaded with information, and that includes people who are living in the shadows, that includes people who are more and more on the fringe. And so we need to figure out, how do we get messages across to folks? And so I live in the town of Huntington, and we have lots of businesses, right? So when I, you know, go to the school, or when I go to work, I pass by lots of opportunities to be messaged to. But in some of our communities, that's not the case. When you go out east, there's not only a digital divide, people are touched less by community. People, maybe they go to their, their faith-based institution, and maybe they have a special restaurant, but they don't have access to the same opportunity for messaging over and over again. That's why we've engaged the Farm Bureau, that's why we're making sure that we're reaching folks who are doing work on farms, who maybe are only going from the farm to their very overcrowded home after work, and maybe not even accessing food, even though they're working in a food industry, right? So there's, there's, there has to be that, that local, local effort to identify messengers, and then infrastructure to deliver messages. So where do people go when they're in crisis? One place is our food pantries. So we need to make sure that at every food pantry, there's information with food about the importance of the census. Our school districts, we have wonderful chairs of our education committee in Lars Clemmerson from Hampton Bays and Mike Negler from Mineola. You know, we're talking about it every single thing in the school, from registration to school events, to everything, to make sure that messages about census are included, because the message then is, wow, this impacts my school, it impacts my child. The other thing is, school districts have a unique position in that they have access to data that we don't have, right? They can look at their list of registrations and say, wow, I have 15 kids registered to this one single-family house. And the Census Bureau is going to be updating information every night about census tracts. So school districts can go on and say, look, in this tract that is in my school district, nobody is responding, and come up with creative ways to do outreach themselves. Of course, they should never, and they never would, share that information, because in the land of NIMBYism here on Long Island, people would do nefarious things with it. But our school districts can certainly be ambassadors. And I think part of, you know, I make this joke so much, I'm almost tired of hearing myself say it, but I, I'm not going to get invited to any parties anymore, I'm not going to have any social life, because literally everywhere I go, whether it's the gas station, and somebody's filling my gas, whether it's the bank, whether I'm online at CVS, everywhere I go, I talk to people about the census, because we have to all be ambassadors. And so it's about finding those trusted influencers, those messages, coming up with things like Census Sundays in our churches, you know, finding a way to infuse it, so that you're creating, not only are you building an army, but you're creating momentum, and you're creating a culture that says, filling out the census is the single most important thing you can do. And one more point I will make, you know, I think about our newly arrived neighbors in particular, and the pre-migration, migration, and post-migration trauma that folks have had to go through to come here, because they want a better life, because they want safety, they want quality for their children, and they want to have a future. And I really believe part of the message is saying, filling out the census is the single most effective way that you can impact that future.
And we actually see, in response to your question, we actually see that as we've been engaging our subcommittee and our committee members in reference to census, providing educational opportunities, that they're now serving as those ambassadors. And I hear feedback of, wow, I talked to my neighbor and they're going to fill out the census, because it is their neighbor. It is someone that they trust, their trusted voice, they know that that person is not going to communicate with them or give them information that is inaccurate. Therefore, they have convinced individuals to participate in the census. So the work that we're doing here is really the foundational work, but it's also important because those individuals are going to be the ones that have the touch points with those individuals that may feel like they're on the fringes, and they shouldn't respond, or I'm scared to respond. But then hearing from a trusted voice within their community will ensure that they do respond.
Any other?
Chairman, can I ask one more question about the translation? So actually, just to clarify, I think what you were saying about translation is different from what perhaps a state agency could provide in terms of translating materials, right? So those kinds of shared services, although they're great, they're the model for libraries, like, that doesn't supplant the actual grassroots work that you're talking about.
It doesn't supplant it. There's certainly opportunities for, you know, collaboration in places where we may be able to, you know, work with the state or work with our counties. I think both of our counties have language access orders as well, certainly could work to, to leverage some of those resources. But no, it's, it's the, you know, the community newsletter that needs to go out, and needs to be in five different languages about census. It's about all of those other pieces that are so critical.
Right? And things like, I would say, like a career one-stop or a kiosk in a DMV doesn't really replace like a library or-
A wire cashing, a wire transfer place where folks are sending money back home, a barber shop, you know?
Those are the types of places.
You know, a bodega, all the places where people go to live their natural lives. Yes. It's, it's really about leveraging those existing systems, right? Where are people going? It's meeting people where they are, and being able to speak to them in their language. And it's also why one of the strategies that I'm hoping we employ in our region is, you know, folks who don't speak English as a first language, encouraging the phone as an opportunity to complete the census, because you can get, I believe it's 12 languages, you can get, you can speak to an individual in 12 languages on the phone to complete your census. And for some folks, that will certainly quell some of the anxiety.
But I can't underscore enough that if there are opportunities from the state level to be able to assist with translation services and interpretation services, that would be amazing, because the counties and municipalities have limited budgets that are associated with language access. I happen to be the language access coordinator for Suffolk County as well. So we have limited budgets. So if there was something that the state could do in reference to assisting with the translation, that would be awesome.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I mean, it's really less than a question, a comment. I want to echo other commissioners about the really impressive presentation you have done, and I must echo also that our great executive, I'm the executive, has to it 10 times, and I cannot be the only one who hasn't said that yet today.
It was worth the wait.
But it's very impressive, and, you know, Vanessa, Rebecca, everybody. The, the only more kind of question, comment is, we normally build that army to make sure that people are counted, and in people's mind, it's usually, well, knocking at doors, reminding the individuals a need to fill the census, how to do it. But you touched already on the fact that there's so many places of contact that we need to make sure are places that stress the message, communicate to the population, especially in undercounted areas, that is important to fill the census. And I feel that we need to have an outreach program with employers, our workplaces, and in organizations like myself, in our union, like our own union, that part of the message should be also that they should contact that bodega, that employer, that place that you send money back home, that place of, of worship, and not just like making sure your neighbor fills the census. And, you know, I, I think this is very important to emphasize, because you may have, in our union, for example, the folks who are benefiting from the union have the benefits, the jobs, the ability of having a little bit more free time, not much, but a little bit more, to do something, should be directed to those workplaces, and should be directed to other, those points of contact, including our school system. So I think that we should work with the labor federation here on how union members, in particular through public service and private, are given a checklist of things that they can do. Something as easy as saying, have you put a sign, reminding people about the census, where they shop, where they fill the gas, and where they, you know, you know, do other activities in their lives, and not just think about themselves filling the census.
Great.
Yep. So, so thank you again for your incredible leadership, all of you. It's really beyond impressive, and exciting that we actually have this, this incredible leadership here in Long Island. I would say that we need to prepare ourselves, right, as, as you know, that the citizenship question is before the court now. I think the oral arguments begin later this, this month, right? I think April 23, or so. And so a decision will be done before, obviously, June. And, and we have, you know, unfortunately, the expectation that the court is going to rule against us. The fact that the court decided to take the case, you know, leads you to believe that they're going to rule in favor of adding the citizenship question. So we need to be ready for that. I actually got a call early this morning from the Association of National Advertisers. There's a multicultural coalition within that group that embodies all of the ethnic media, or ethnic media advertisers in the country. And one particular network was asking us, we're going to back out, we're not going to go after this money that the census is putting forward, because we feel that this is an attack on our community. And I said, whoa, whoa, hold on, that's the exact opposite of what you need to do, right? And so I mentioned that, because I think that, that's, if you mentioned, you know, we're at war here, that's dramatic, Rebecca, but, but it is, in, in any ways. I think apropos to say that, that is the first sort of, you know, sort of attack, right? Because the Trump administration started last year, very insidiously, attacking the census confidentiality provision and saying, well, we're not sure if that's in fact the case, even though the Constitution is very clear on that, right? Though we're not sure if it's really confidential, or how, how it works. And so I think that that will be the first salvo, right, in, in terms of attack for our community. So just for the panel, what's our response to the likeliness that the Supreme Court ends up ruling in support of adding the citizenship question to the census, and then the reaction of the Trump administration to possibly saying, wonderful, and we're not sure if the confidentiality clause is actually going to prevent us from really looking at, you know, the way people respond, and the fear that that will drive, right, across communities? So we need to be ready for that outcome, which is a real likely possibility. And what is going to be our response to that, when that happens, again, before June of this year?
Just to build on, well, before you answer the question, because it's an important point to Commissioner Calderon's point, there's a chilling effect just by the court case now.
Exactly.
So some people assume the question's going to be on, even though it's not as a matter of law right now, it could be. How do you combat that issue, where you've already created, like you said, those pockets of fear, where they already just assume it's on?
So one of the things we feel very strongly about in our complete county committee effort is, you know, making sure this is a very bottom-up process, and that we're engaging every, every, every immigrant community here on Long Island. So we have two separate subcommittees, one for Nassau and one for Suffolk, related to the immigrant community, specifically because Suffolk is different with our East End, which is rural, and the needs are different in terms of outreach. I think, as I said before, I think there's going to be raids the minute, you know, the minute it's time to fill out the census. We have to prepare for every type of fear tactic that could possibly exist. One of our subcommittees, one of the chairs is here, but I won't mention her, one of our subcommittees had this great idea. They said, well, listen, what we'll do is, Long Island will resist. And if that question is on there, we'll tell everyone not to fill it out, and then we'll send a statement, well, guess what, that's illegal, and we don't go to jail. But what we can tell people, and what, you know, we've checked with the Census Bureau repeatedly about, is that any question that makes you uncomfortable, you have a right to skip. Now, if you skip too many questions, of course, you won't be counted. So we don't want to suggest that people skip too many questions. And of course, you have to put your address to be identified. But, you know, we, we don't want, I mean, the reality is, we have an unbelievable uphill battle here. I mean, we have to be honest about that. But for folks that we are able to engage, we don't want fear about responding to that question to stop them from completing the census. And so part of my thought is, the messaging is, you can, you know, skip a question if it makes you uncomfortable, and lots of people skip questions. So it's not just, you know, you'll be, it'll be obvious that you're skipping it for a reason, but lots of people skip different questions on the census. And that may be antithetical to what the Census Bureau would, you know, encourage me to say, but my, my goal is to get people counted. And I think, you know, there's a, there's another message here besides just the funding piece, that I think we have to remember. The census is a tool for so much more. This is an empowerment tool. This is about you, your humanity, and that you count. And we have a large undocumented population on Long Island, we have a large immigrant population on Long Island. I think Sol Marie eloquently said earlier that very soon we'll be majority-minority here on Long Island. And we have to honor that, too. And so we want to make sure that we take away any barriers that we can take away to get people to complete the census. But to your point, you know, this is about being ready for anything. And it's, we have to always be in that preparation mode.
One final point. In terms of the messaging, I think it's really important, because we can get into a lot of trouble, right? We've had a lot of these conversations with a lot of our leadership, our community leadership, to say, fill out the census and fill it out completely, right? I mean, i- it's up to people to make that decision, whether they're going to skip that question or not. But we have to be very careful, as leaders, as community leaders, in terms of how we, we tell people what to do and what to do. We want people to fill the census out, we want them to fill it out to their best of abilities, and, and that's kind of where we kind of stop that conversation. People will make personal decisions around that.
Yes, I agree. But I do think it's important for people to know that they're, you know, they won't get in trouble if they skip a question.
Right.
And that's the point, right, the confidentiality piece, which we really need to bring home. And, and that's why I raise this sort of concern, because I think when it happens, and it's, you know, let's, let's hope I'm wrong, let's hope we're wrong, that, you know, Supreme Court, you know, sort of decides the other way. But likely, they're going to allow this question to be included in this census. And so right then and then, we have to have a massive public education-
Correct.
...response to that.
Absolutely. And it's actually been tested, I think it was in Connecticut, they tested what?
Rhode Island.
Rhode Island? Rhode Island and Connecticut, they've tested the census question, and what the experience and how people are feeling, that even it- and how people are feeling that even it might be on the census. And the response is, they're not filling out the census if the citizenship question is on there. So we know what the chilling effect it can have. So we have an uphill battle that we're going to have to deal with, but we're willing to put the boots to the ground and do what we need to do to make people feel comfortable that even though you're filling it out, the information is protected. It's protected under Title 13, and it's not shared with any other governmental agencies.
And that's, you know, and I'm sorry. That's an environment where people are giving up food and they're giving up medical care. I was, you know, at a site where there was a very awful fire recently in our region and a large amount of families were undocumented and there were resources available for them by the government because of certain emergency weather standards. And people were afraid, you know, terrified to even get support from an agency that was there to help them. So this is what we're dealing with. People are giving up food, they're giving up food for their babies, they're, you know, not leaving their, this is a terror, this is a perpetual trauma, and trauma impacts behavior. And so we are in a position where we have to remember that even without that, even if the, if we lucked out and it wasn't on the census, I think our efforts around our immigrant community is going to have to be a huge part of our focus regardless.
Yeah. And the only other thing that I was going to add, and that was a really, that was a very, very legitimate point that you brought up, Jose. From a philanthropy's perspective, one of the things that we want people to take away is that we don't want, you know, there is a very, very large and growing immigrant population in the United States, and we don't want the erasure or neglect or, you know, or the erasure of that population and the consequences that come with that. There is, these are residents of the United States, and they should be seen and they should be counted. That said, to your point, there is a significant amount of conversations happening. I'm sure that you know, you're probably part of them across the country around, you know, how to prepare for that. And legal advocates and legal organizations, the Leadership Conference for Civil and Human Rights has convened a cadre of legal providers to prepare, to do rapid response, to start thinking about, you know, what happens in the event of, you know, of that question and how do we need to, as a country? And then, and that will play out, obviously, at the state level, how we need to be prepared for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the panelists. Let's give them a big round of applause. We are now going to turn to our public comment period. I just, we have a clock. We wish you could speak for 20 minutes, but there are about 30 people who have signed up and not enough time. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to stay, and all the commissioners can stay or go at 6 o'clock, because we promised till 6 o'clock, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance to put their thoughts on the record. When it goes to zero, I'm going to say thank you, not because I'm rudely cutting you off because I want to have everybody have a chance to speak, but if you have written testimony, please see one of our folks and submit it electronically as well because we will post everything that we receive on our website, which we've been doing. If you go to our website, we have a ton of testimony, but I want to make sure that everybody has a chance. And if I also hack your name, I apologize. Please just correct it for the record. Secretary Rosado is much better at this, but she just does this to me to torture me, I think, on some level. So I'd like to call up first Eliana Fernandez from Make the Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Eliana Fernandez, and I am a leader organizer at Make the Road New York and a longtime Suffolk County resident. I stand here today to represent the immigrant community, which Trump administration is trying to silence and intimidate. New York State cannot allow for families like mine to be erased, and therefore, our state must show leadership and commitment to make sure that we all are counted. Our organization, Make the Road New York, is working hard to ensure our communities understand the importance of being counted in the census because this is not just about how many people live in our communities. It's about the allocation of resources for critical programs such as education, healthcare, housing, food, food assistance, and the kind of political representation our communities will receive over the next 10 years. In an attempt to undermine the participation of the immigrant community, the Trump administration requested the Census Bureau to add a citizenship question. However, our community is stood together to challenge this request. A coalition of states and community organizations, including Make the Road, took this issue to the court, and it will not be heard by the Supreme Court this year. I am a DACA recipient who comes from a mixed status family. Some of my family members are citizens, some are green card holders, and some are undocumented. Like my family, there are thousands of families across Suffolk County who might not want to answer the census because they will not want to put their families at risk. It is fundamental that the new state of New York shows real leadership to make sure all of us are counted in 2020. Currently, the state of New York has allocated $20 million in the budget. This is not nearly enough in comparison to what is needed. By comparison, California has allocated well over $100 million in the census efforts. New York needs to go further to secure and expedite funding for this campaign. In order to have every single member of our community and working-class communities accounted for, New York needs to invest in community-based outreach. Trusted community organizations like Make the Road will help maximize participation across the county and the state. I know the immigrant community is one of the hardest-to-count communities on Long Island. People will be allowed to submit their responses online, but for some people, this might not be attainable in Suffolk due to lacks of safe and reliable internet. We need to be fully prepared for the 20 census, 2020 census. New York's political representation in Congress is at risk. We cannot afford to lose. Our communities cannot afford to lose. The voices of our communities are at risk. It is our responsibility to help lead this issue to ensure everyone is counted regardless of their immigration status or what community they are from. All New Yorkers in Suffolk, including the immigrant community across the state, deserve a fair and accurate count. New York needs to invest the resources to make this possible and fair for everyone. Thank you.
Very much. Sandy Brewster Walker. Sandy? Sandy has left us.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. Our names are Carla Bradley and Lauren La Magna, and we are the Public Affairs Managers of Planned Parenthood of Nassau County and Planned Parenthood Hudson-Baconic, respectively. We are proud to provide sexual and reproductive healthcare services to 29,243 patients across Nassau and Suffolk Counties. We are here to share why we are committed to educating communities about the importance of completing the 2020 census and to ask the Complete Count Commission to provide funding and resources to ensure that New York is accurately counted. Of the Planned Parenthood patients served across Long Island, about 45% are patients covered by Medicaid or Medicaid-managed care. Medicaid is the largest federal assistance program whose distributed funds are on the basis of census-derived statistics. It accounts for 58% of census-guided funding, which is used to help individuals with low income gain access to primary and preventative healthcare services. We recognize that the majority of our patients come from some of the hardest-to-count areas, including Hempstead, Roosevelt, Amityville, Bellport, Brentwood, Central Islip, and Wyandance. Census tracts in these towns averaged a 54% to 65% male return rate in the previous census. An undercount of the communities that our organizations serve will jeopardize our patients' ability to access care, putting people's health and lives at risk. Healthcare access and representation depend upon the census being conducted in a way that allows for a high quality and accurate count.
In the next census, we will see new additional barriers to getting a complete count, which will impact our patients. For example, with the potential addition of the question on citizenship, we know that immigrant communities may be afraid to respond to the census due to either their personal immigration status or the status of their families, making it more likely that they will be undercounted. This is the first year that the census data will also be collected through an online survey. Nearly 20% of people in Hempstead and nearly 23% of people in Wyandance from 2013 to 2017 had either no home internet or dial-up only. While the census can be filled out through other methods, this creates additional steps to complete the census, decreasing the likelihood that they will be completed. Our patients are folks who are already facing barriers to care and services they need. Not collecting the data needed to ensure proper allocation of funds to Medicaid is a risk that Planned Parenthood is not willing to take. We're engaging in census outreach for the first time with coalition partners across Long Island because we know the stakes are high and that as a trusted healthcare provider, we have a responsibility to reach our patients and communities we serve to tell them why they should be counted. Without adequate financial support from the state, we will not have the resources to do outreach and engagement necessary to ensure a complete count. With resources, we can work to dispel myths about data usage that would inhibit people's desire to participate in the census and inform communities on how data is collected, ensuring that Long Island is accurately and completely counted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And beautifully timed. You each got 1 minute and 30 seconds to the dot. You win the award tonight.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodman Serrano. I am the field coordinator for the Long Island Civic Engagement Table. And I was raised here on Long Island by both my parents since I was seven years old. The mission of our nonprofit organization is to increase civic participation in immigrant communities and communities of color on Long Island. And it is to ensure that folks in communities, in these communities have a strong voice in the political process and that they receive the resources and representation that they deserve. And this is why we care deeply about making sure every Long Islander gets counted in the 2020 census. And we urge you to prioritize resources for census outreach and education. Members of the commission, we are less than one year away from Census Day on April 1st, 2020. With a potential citizenship question that will be included on the census, the failure of the federal government to adequately prepare and to move to a mainly online census, this one will be especially challenging. Our organization and our member organizations, which represent and serve members of the Latino, Black, immigrant, and low-income communities in Nassau and Suffolk Counties, are committed to ensuring our Long Island communities participate in the 2020 census. We are prepared to do the on-the-ground work by knocking on doors, canvassing transit hubs, and wherever there are lots of people. This is the work that we do every year in communities that have been historically undercounted by the census. In order for the work that we all do to be successful, we need our elected officials and New York State to take leadership in this very important issue. We applaud the governor for including $20 million for the census outreach. This is, however, not enough. To overcome the many challenges of this year's census and to ensure local and trusted organizations are reaching communities that have been undercounted, we must prioritize investing and expediting more funding. As a Long Islander, I care deeply about my community here. This is where I was raised. This is where I went to school in Brentwood and where my family lives. Our communities are worth the investment. Let's take serious efforts to ensure our Long Island communities get counted in the 2020 census. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Caroline Ashby, and I'm the director of the Nassau Library System, which coordinates services for the 54 public libraries in Nassau, creating efficiencies and better experiences for library users. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to demonstrate that complete count efforts need to go beyond outreach and education. They need to extend to the mechanics of implementation. Long Island is very lucky to have very capable CBOs like HW CLI to organize across interest groups, and I have the pleasure of serving on many of Nassau and Suffolk's Complete Count subcommittees. But when it comes time to actually take the census, libraries are where people will come for information, access to technology, and one-on-one assistance. Public libraries will be the primary venues outside the home for census-taking. For hard-to-count New York communities, including seniors, immigrants, and low-income families, libraries are already positioned as trusted providers of ESL classes, safe after-school spaces, and job skills support. Across New York State, 100% of hard-to-count populations live within one mile of a public library. Census 2020 will be online for the first time. Populations subject to undercounting disproportionately lack broadband internet access at home. Public libraries are the only institutions already providing free access to technology and digital literacy instruction to all. Nassau's public libraries provided 1.5 million internet sessions on our public computers last year. We know from experience with tax forms, applications for public assistance, and Medicare enrollment that as government processes move online, the onus of digital literacy support falls to public libraries. That's wonderful. That's what we're here for. But it's both time and labor-intensive. Serving the expected influx of community members seeking census support will require additional staffing and resources. There are security risks associated with the digital census, too, and populations with low digital literacy are more susceptible to online scams. Libraries can provide a safe and secure online process and maintain the privacy of users. Thanks to the existing IT capacity of libraries, technology upgrades can be made quickly and efficiently with a modest level of funding. Some advocates say that preparing for the digital census isn't necessary because other means of census-taking will be available. But the extent to which paper questionnaires will be available is still an open question, and federal outreach will stress the online census. When people most at risk of being undercounted hear that the census is online, libraries will be where they turn for information and hands-on assistance. Last year alone, Nassau's public libraries had 9.6 million visits. I urge the commission to recognize the essential role of libraries in executing complete count efforts and ensure that we can provide the necessary staff, technology, and online security. Libraries are organized, ubiquitous, well-used, and ready to serve. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
We're going to now turn to, it's 5:20, so I feel like I'm obligated.
I should say evening. Okay. All right. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good evening. Little County Executive, the great County Executive, the mayor sends his regards. Okay. My name is Marian Russo. I am the director of the Village of Patchogue Community Development Agency and serve as the village's representative on the Suffolk County Full Count Committee. The Village of Patchogue is a community of 12,000 residents located on the south shore of Long Island. It is also part of the Patchogue-Medford School District, which has 51,000 residents. Both the village and the school district have a high percentage of Latino residents. In the last census, 30% of the village residents identified as Latino. For the school district, the percentage was 44%. The poverty rate in the Village of Patchogue is 15%, and we are a majority low-mod income community. The village is participating in the full count committee because Mayor Pontieri understands that numbers matter. The information from the census has a direct impact on the funding the village receives from the state and federal governments. The census information is integral for allocation of resources, for grant funding requests, and provision of services. The Patchogue community will form its own full count committee. Leveraging an established network of community-based and faith-based organizations, along with the Patchogue-Medford Library, the village relies on the community-based organizations and faith-based organizations for community outreach because every day, they interact and serve those whom are most likely not to respond to the census, the underserved, elderly, poor, and immigrants. The 2020 census, as you've heard over and over, presents roadblocks to counting, particularly with response being taken online. Many in our community do not have computers or connections to the internet, and then there are those who just don't know how to use the new technology. Particular concern is the inclusion of the citizenship question. For a community with a large immigrant population, which includes DACA and TPS recipients, and I just want to say, Eliana graduated from Patchogue-Medford High School, so, as well as undocumented individuals, the citizenship question could cause many not to respond. It will take the work of trusted individuals represented trusted organizations to reassure, dispel rumors, and calm fears. Those organizations are community-based organizations and faith-based organizations working in the community. Because it is the community-based organizations and faith-based organizations that will be doing the majority of the work, we encourage direct funding to those organizations to assure a full count for the Village of Patchogue, the County of Suffolk, and the state of New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marian. Let's call up next Shaniqua Levin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shaniqua Levin. I am the founder and CEO of the Women's Diversity Network. The Women's Diversity Network connects and mobilizes women of different backgrounds to create positive changes to create positive changes through a more unified sisterhood. We have over about 40 different members representing various organizations, as well as various communities throughout all of Long Island. Let's talk a little bit about relationships. When you've been going to the same people's house for years, registering them to vote, driving them to the polls, they get to know you, feel comfortable with you, and your relationship grows stronger. When you've been going to the same people's house for years, informing them about bills and laws that impact them, they get to know you, feel comfortable with you, and your relationship grows stronger. When you've been going to the same people's house for years, telling them about community programs and services, they get to know you, feel comfortable with you, and your relationship goes stronger. What else grows from these encounters? Their trust. So when you send census employees to their door, our hard-to-count areas will continue to exclude themselves. But when we come to their door, because they know us, they're comfortable with us. Our relationship is strong. They open the door. They talk to us. They ask us questions. And they include themselves in the census because we have built this trust with them. Our organizations and groups are your ally. We want people to be counted just as much as you do. But we can't do it with $20 million. We need at least $40 million to begin to do it. Do you want New York to lose some of its representation in Congress? If our hard-to-count areas stay hidden, we're destined to lose some of those seats. Do you want New York to lose federal funding for education, for roads, for hospitals? If our hard-to-count areas stay hidden, we are destined to lose those dollars. The census happens every 10 years and has long-lasting impacts. You already know having government-employed census workers is not enough to reach people who don't trust the government. They're not going to tell you that their cousin's been staying with them because their father passed away and their mother is in the hospital battling cancer. They don't trust you to not tell their landlord. But when they hear from us that it's safe to include their cousin's information, they will trust us because we have built the relationship with them. You trust us and rely on our organizations to deliver programs and resources to some of New York's most vulnerable populations. So why not trust us and our expert opinions when it comes to the census? Now is not the time to devalue the relationship we've built with you. Now is not the time to gamble on New York's future. Now is the time to give us more funding for the census.
Thank you very much. Phyllis Hartman.
Hello, and thank you for inviting me to speak to you today about the 2020 census. My name is Phyllis Hartman. I live in Bellport, and I am here as the lead volunteer in Suffolk County for Bend the Ark. Bend the Ark is a national organization composed of progressive Jews who are working together to achieve our vision to transform our country to be inclusive, equitable, and actively supportive of the dignity of every person and all of the communities impacted by structural inequality. We work on the pressing domestic issues of our time, and we believe in working in partnership with communities who are directly impacted in justice. Next week, Jews will be celebrating the Passover holiday that tells the story of our exodus from Egypt after being held there in bondage. This story reminds us that none of us are free until all of us are free. This year, the connection to immigrant justice could not be clearer. In New York, that means fighting alongside immigrant communities so they do not have to live in the shadows but will be given the dignity that all residents deserve, specifically to be seen and counted in the 2020 census as required by our Constitution. However, we know that even in the best of times, New York is one of the most notoriously hard-to-count populations. Unfortunately, we are not in the best of times when it comes to our immigrant neighbors. We will face an extraordinarily difficult time if there is a citizenship question on the census form. But even if that question is removed, the current climate around immigration issues has eroded immigrants' faith in our government institutions. Moreover, this year, we will be using a new online census form, which so far has been shown to be less effective than predicted in reaching goal response rates. Compared to the 2010 census that resulted in undercounted populations, the 2020 census has the potential to do real harm to our state. We stand to lose representation in Congress and federal funds for education, infrastructure, health, and other public programs. To avoid this situation, New York needs much more than the $20 million allocated. Why? Because the self-response phase will probably not result in response rates projected, and thus will require more door-to-door counts, and these counts have even lower response rates. If we are going to overcome all of these barriers, state funding is needed now to support local and community-based organizations who can provide robust, trusted, and effective outreach, especially for hard-to-reach populations. Such funding could support educational public forums, in-person discussions, and even one-on-one sessions with people in their native languages. In summary, at Bend the Ark New York, our values compel us to support our local community-based organizations, especially those working with immigrant communities. They will be critical to achieving our shared goal of counting everyone in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Phyllis. Tracy Edwards.
My name is Tracy Edwards. I'm the Long Island Regional Director of the NAACP, and I work for the great and powerful Hazel Dukes. I would rather submit my written statements to you and just address some of the concerns that I listened to what you were saying, if you don't mind. So you had talked about us getting this bucket of money. I'll tell you that the County Executive, who's a favorite of mine, and the other County Executive in Nassau, you know, they wanted us to get our act together. But I don't want to leave you the impression that because we have our act together that we don't need the money. Because we need the money. And what it should give you a little bit of peace is that the funding that you allocate to us will be measured. It's not going to be unrestricted. We will be held accountable. And you can tell from our presentation today, we know what we're doing. I am fortunate to have been named on the Subcommittee of People of Color Subcommittee along with Marian Elacasa in Nassau County. We are going to do what is necessary. We really are. Simmons, you are absolutely correct to have us identify the areas. And what I will tell you is that those same areas are most in trouble now. They get less education funding. They get less dollars. They're not high wealth. So if we do not do what we need to do in terms of counting correctly, those areas will still suffer. Mayor Brown, we need people on the ground. From a leadership perspective, we got it. But we need to have the resources that are going to be able to knock on those doors and to go into those areas and to be able to count. And I can't tell whether you are Mr. Figueroa or you are Mr. Figueroa because the...
Mr. Figueroa is a good-looking one.
Okay. Because the sign is in...
I'm kidding, they're both very good-looking.
You know, what we want to say to you is, while we do have businesses and we definitely want the private funding, we want our share of the state money. We don't want to give you the impression at all that we don't need the money and other areas need the money because they don't have their act together and they may need more funding and more help. Every resource that you send to us, we will be able, with the leadership of this committee here, you will see your return on investment. We will do what's need to be done, and we will make all of you proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tell Ms. Dukes we all say hello.
All right, we'll do that. And his coach as well.
Okay.
Jacob Dixon.
My name is Jacob Dixon. I serve as the CEO of Choice for All. Our defining role is to collectively solve issues that adversely affect the well-being of children. But I also come here born, raised, and proud to be from Roosevelt, one of the hard-to-count communities in Nassau County, where we are nearly 0.40% undercounted, with more than a quarter of our community not having access to technology. And so for me, I knew that that was a shock, but then I just had a focus group with a group of parents that we serve in our after-school program, and it was not a shock to them. And when we asked why, technology access, language access, lack of trust in government, and most importantly, not credible messengers. And when we talked about this, my organization, when we talked about the whole money scheme, I started this organization with my 401K and savings when I went towards my doctor at Ohio University. Instead of going there, we were on the ground, no salary for four years, not afraid to knock on doors, and canvass and have conversations. We're now eight years later moving into a three-story community center. But that was because of the fact of the people. And because of the people, they were able to explain the importance of the census. And when we showed this map out there to folks, they said, what do we need to do? So there's an urgency. People understand the critical need of it, but what we need is the resources to back up that infrastructure. And more importantly, we need to bring authentic engagement on the ground. This cannot happen if we do not have the tools and resources to make that count. And to give you more of a realistic example of this, our organization positioned ourselves to submit a federal grant. We did not get the federal grant, and why? Was because of demonstrated need. They did not consider our community poor, but yet we have 99% of our students eligible for free or reduced lunch. But our poverty level was at 10% according to the United States Census. But we have a 40% undercounted area within our community, and according to them, two to three largest census tract is the hardest to count in the country. So you tell me, how do I respond to this and work with our amazing partners across this room to get the job done if we do not have the resources to do this? And so our organization is positioned to not just be a local Complete Counts Commission and work with our county folks, but we cannot do this without that funding and without those resources and assuring that the people are actually being heard because they're used to not being heard. But today, I hope that it'll start a different story with that with all of you in your capacities, and I'm grateful for your service in this commission today.
Thank you. Hold up next, Samuel Chu.
Most people know me as Sammy Chu. I'm CEO of Edgewise Energy. I'm here today as a board member of the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island. I also serve on a number of other boards here, but given the state of the Happy Hour, I will spare you all the list. As I work in my day job on energy, I remain acutely aware that many people struggle just to keep their heat on in the winter. The programs that fund assistance for people in that situation is driven by census data. I also happen to be a recovering public official. My most recent gig in government was working as Chief of Staff for County Executive Steve The finest gentleman to work for in government. And the reason was my final gig in government because I was tasked with overseeing much of the recovery and response to Sandy. And, you know, I had to see the work of government and the nonprofit community come together as a tapestry to address regional needs. And it was during that time, it was an eye-opener for me and I think for a lot of people, about just how many Long Islanders live on the brink. And the programs to help those folks is driven by census data. And it's hard to imagine, even for someone who spent a good number of years in government service, how many things are driven by census data. And it really comes down to solving Long Island's problems, which are really three E's, you know? Our environment, our economy, and equity. And we can't do any of those to the capacity we would like to without a properly counted census. I do want to use the remainder of my time. Jennifer Rojas. I also serve on the Child Care Council of Suffolk as a board member. Jennifer Rojas, our executive director, I'm not sure if it's serendipitously or ironically had to leave to pick up her children. I'm going to submit her written responses, but I will list just some of the programs in childcare that will be threatened by an undercount in the census. Our Child Care and Development Block Grant, State Children's Health Insurance Program, Medicaid, Head Start, SNAP. These are just a sampling of some of the programs that are put to use every day to help make sure the success of our children on Long Island is taken into account. I think it all comes down to one fundamental question. How can we properly serve the public if we don't know who the public is? So I please, as you make your recommendations, we really, I really hope you consider making sure every bit of that $20 million is spent and spent on the census and as much as it can come down here as Long Island as you can commit. Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel. I hope you have a long and enjoyable recovery. Let me know how it goes. I'd like to call Edward Maltzen.
Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. It's an honor to be here. My name is Ed Maltzen. I am Director of Shared Services for Suffolk County. I have been tasked by our great County Executive with administrating and overseeing the Shared Services Initiative in Suffolk County. I want to just say, Madam Secretary, the Department of State has been a particularly great resource for us as we've worked to build this program out. As of this morning, we have 101 local government partners that are part of our Shared Services Initiative. The overwhelming majority of those partners are opt-in local governments. That's governments that proactively took action to become part of this initiative. We work with towns, we work with villages, school districts, library districts, fire districts, we even work with a water district. We have towns that assisted us last year as we went through the Lucca process, which was very, very important, and they were very, very great partners with us as we went through that process. We have shared services partners that are part of our local government Subcommittee on the Complete Count Committee in Suffolk County. Areas, you know, where we can work together in local government are in the sharing of data, the sharing of institutional and historic knowledge, as well as outreach to our residents. Our library partners, our library district partners play a very, very critical role as a touch point for some of our newest residents to Suffolk County. So, you know, I just want to say, because you've been here such a long time, you know, we are now in a position where we can consider a complete count program as part of our 2020 Shared Services Plan that must be submitted to the state. I believe we will be moving forward in that direction, and I would just suggest, if not urge, this commission to make that recommendation to counties throughout New York State that they adopt a shared services approach to complete count so that we can absolutely maximize the finite dollars we have to get this mission right. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Lorraine Deller.
I am Lorraine Deller, Executive Director of Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association. On behalf of Long Island's 124 Boards of Education, I am here to affirm our commitment to do all within our authority and capabilities to assure our region has a complete and accurate count in the 2020 census. Long Island school leaders fully understand the dire ramifications of a less-than-complete count that will occur for our schools, communities, and citizens. Ramifications that will plague us well into the decades beyond year 2020. Census data influences the distribution of federal education funding to schools and states. Long Island and its schools have long experience with aquatic under... with the chronic underpayment of the government share of the cost of compliance with federal nutrition programs, Titles One and Two, Medicaid reimbursement, and services for students with special needs as mandated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Long Island schools and local property taxpayers have not only been burdened with the need to fill the gaps created by unfunded and underfunded federal education mandates, their federal tax payments have largely gone to ease tax burdens in other states. That inequity caused by an imbalance in federal aid that bypasses this region only to be sent elsewhere is due in large part to a perception that we are an island of wealth with a population with few needs. That in turn has influenced Congress's arbitrary limitations as to where federal education dollars are directed. Our schools interact with and serve a large portion of the hidden-from-official-view population that the census must reach. A look at our enrollment shows a vastly different picture than that captured in the census of 2010. If Long Island is to move towards receiving its fair share of federal funding for its public schools, it is imperative that Census 2020 presents a true count of Long Island's demographics. We cannot afford to squander the opportunity to correct that perception. Under the leadership of the Nassau and Suffolk County executives and the stewardship of the Health and Welfare Council of Long Island, a grassroots strategic mobilization is underway. This localized mobilization effort is neither premature nor should it be assumed it could be successful on its own. Some other states are far ahead of New York in aggressively reaching out to record every part of their population. New York State must not only do the same, it must financially assist those localities and agencies that are the key to reaching the hard-to-reach. In order that we count...
We're going to have to leave it here. If you would submit all of your testimony, we will absolutely include it in the record.
Okay, thank you. In order that we count is to be more than a local. We need to count on the state of New York for support and resources.
Right now, and you can hand the rest of your testimony. Thank you very much. Margaret Smith. Going ones? There you are. Is it Smith or Smythe?
You can have your pick.
Okay.
Depends about what country you're in.
I want to go with the right pronunciation.
If you go to Ireland, it's Smith. If you say in America, it's Smythe.
Okay.
And that was immigration's determination. That's true. My name is Sister Margaret Smythe, and I am the Director of the North Fork Spanish Apostolate, working on the invisible and sometimes having disappeared East End of Long Island. As we say out there, sometimes you go to Orion Point to Montauk, next boat to China. In the 2010 census, we worked very diligently as a community with partnering with the Census Bureau. And we had a great deal of success. We were able to develop community leaders who went out and spoke to the people, who helped the people, and did many, many things that brought people in to fill out papers that they had never done before. Almost ten years have passed. In ten years, we've become more modern in our society, and we have become more chaotic. And we have grown more. And all of those have an impact upon what we are trying to do. We have grown more modern, so it's very common to have the internet. And people do have it, but I want to put a little different spin on it. When I talk to the guys, they use the internet. That's our problem. They use it for games, and they use it to send mail home. People don't generally use it to take surveys. Surveys are complicated. I look at some surveys that I get and say, what are they trying to say to me? What are they asking? And so I don't, I shut them off. Sometimes it's very simple, we answer. That's a problem. Also, not everybody can read the technicality, even in their own language, of some of the questions. So we have to provide additional services for people. Open up our church halls, open up the libraries, the schools, everything. Providing people who speak the language that's needed, or for people who speak English that need the help also, in order for them to be able to understand and correctly respond. We have a growth situation. We were talking before about addresses. What do you do about the trailer that sits in the back of a farm that is not registered and families live in it? We still need people to go around and find, block by block, farm by farm, where people are and be able to talk to them. Chaos brings us confusion. I've already tested the waters and asking people, what about if they ask you about your status? They say to me, no. They tell me, no confio. We can say we protect, we have to show that we will. It has to be very convincing. We want to be able to have people say, confiamos, yo confio. And that's going to be a big job. Education is key. Thank you.
I'd like to call up Claire DeRoche, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to offer testimony this afternoon. My name is Claire DeRoche. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Social Justice Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation at Shelter Rock in Manhasset. We decided to offer testimony here today because we believe that participation in the census aligns with the very values that we hold dear. We all know that since 1790, the U.S. Census Bureau has conducted a count of the country's population every ten years, as required by the U.S. Constitution. As we have heard this afternoon, the importance of this count cannot be overstated. The apportionment of congressional representatives and funding for important programs affecting the health and welfare of each of us depend on an accurate count of every person living in the country, living in Nassau County, living in our local communities. As Unitarian Universalists, we covenant to promote the dignity of every person. We are especially concerned for the most vulnerable among us. Without an accurate count of every person, local governments and social service organizations will not have the funding necessary to serve the needs of those who live in these communities. And in testimony this afternoon, we have heard how true that is. If our communities are unaware of the need to participate in the census, there will not be an accurate count, and unmet needs will abound. New York State has set aside twenty million dollars for the census. This amount is woefully short of what is needed for these very competent grassroots organizations to do the work that is required to ensure that everyone is counted. As Unitarian Universalists who are committed to the democratic process, we believe that every effort must be made to ensure that every person learns of the importance of being counted and participates in the census. Our commitment to the common good impels us to speak out. We insist that New York State commit funding beyond twenty million, the twenty million set aside for the census. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Kevin Furbussy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Furbussy, and I am the Director of the Suffolk Cooperative Library System. On behalf of our fifty-six member libraries, I would like to welcome you all to Suffolk County and thank you all for your efforts and your involvement with the New York State Complete Count Commission. It goes without saying that the 2020 federal census is critically important to Suffolk County, to Long Island, and to New York State. We who serve the public are and should be responsible for ensuring that New York has a full and complete count of every single one of our residents. The health, the safety, security, and livelihoods of our citizens and our communities are dependent upon it. Public libraries are particularly well-positioned to assist in ensuring a complete count, and they stand ready, willing, and able to do so. Here in Suffolk County, we have sixty-three public library buildings spread around our nine hundred and twelve square miles. No resident in Suffolk County lives more than seven miles away from a public library. Suffolk's public libraries have over two thousand trained staff members available to assist patrons. In 2017, there were eleven point eight million visits to our public libraries. Local residents used our more than two thousand computers more than two million times. But libraries are not about numbers, and they're not about statistics, and they're not about books. Libraries are about people. What libraries do, better than anyone else, is connect people to resources, to information, knowledge, and wisdom. The connections that our libraries and librarians have with the communities they serve are deep, trusting, and respectful. People feel safe at their local public library, and they feel safe using their local public library. Libraries are committed to the patron privacy and digital security. The right to privacy is engaged in everything that libraries do. People who will be hard to count in this census, those without access to computers or high-speed bandwidth, those in economic distress, or those fearful of who may gain access to their responses, are exactly the people that libraries serve each and every day. Libraries already have in place the essential infrastructure that will be needed to guarantee a complete count. While libraries do stand ready to assist with the 2020 census, these are challenging times for libraries. New York State has underfunded libraries for too long. Libraries receive less in state support today than they did a decade ago. And this past budget cut Suffolk County's direct aid to libraries by thirty-four percent. While libraries recognize the critical importance of ensuring a full count, and they are planning and excited to help step up and lead complete count efforts, underfunding will impede their ability to do so. So I would ask this commission to support libraries' efforts by recommending that a portion of the available funding go to public libraries to assist them with providing the infrastructure that will be needed to ensure that each and every single New York State resident is counted in this census. I thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you, Kevin. My apologies on hecking your last name. Catherine Soka. No? Okay. Colleen Merlow.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Colleen Merlow. I am the Executive Director at LI Against Domestic Violence and also a very proud member of the Board at the Health and Welfare Council. I'm here today because there is nothing more important than making sure that in this climate in which there are so many assaults on our basic humanity, that we send a message that every single person counts and thereby get the dollars we deserve. And I want to thank our county executive for setting us up to a place where we're going to be able to get a complete count. But we can't do that without the dollars to follow. I work with a population that often feels they don't count. Women, men, and children come into my agency as victims of abuse. They want to hide, they want to disappear. Through programming that is crucial to save their lives, our agency helps to reignite in them their value. And in doing so, we don't just change families, we create healthier schools and safer communities. Census data funds Medicaid and children's health insurance. Most of the clients who walk through my doors, victims of domestic violence, do so without health insurance. Most of the victims that walk through our door make a daily decision as to whether they're going to pay for their heat or get food. Census affects SNAP benefits. Census data funds our schools, the safe haven for so many children that are victims in these relationships. I know that by listening and through your thoughtful questions that you all get this and that you care deeply. What I ask of you today, as your role as commissioners, is to see that every dollar of the up to twenty million allocated for this work goes to census work, that it doesn't get re-appropriated. This goes to our community, that it goes to our community agencies who can reach the hardest-to-count populations. You can hear from the testimony that we are all really passionate and well-qualified to be doing this work. At the core, the message that every human being counts is a basic moral imperative, and it's being challenged every single day in Washington. Make Long Island win. Make New York win. Exercise your power to ensure and act your count. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. Shelley Brasley.
Good evening. Again, my name is Shelley Brasley, and I am a legislative aide for Senior Councilwoman Gooseby at the Town of Hempstead, Council Madig, District One. I also serve on the Soble Council, which is a state of Black Long Island. And I serve as the Director of the Church of God in Christ Social Action Ministry Eastern New York, which, their church is from Rochester County out to Montauk Point. I'm here today as a resident of Hempstead, though. I live in Nassau County, which is, has been reported as the fifth hard-to-count county in this state. And I live in the village of Hempstead, which has to be one of those areas the sister asked about, the communities in Nassau County. And I'm sorry, there was no one here to talk about that. But Hempstead, Roosevelt, Uniondale, Westbury, Freeport, Lakeview, and Elmont are those hard-to-count areas. So I'd like to know, and I heard some talk about it, but what we're going to do to ensure that disenfranchised communities are accurately counted? As I said, I live in Hempstead, and I'm a former Board of Education trustee in that village. During my tenure, I requested a printout of student enrollment by street address. I didn't want any names, I didn't want anything like that. I simply wanted to know how many adults registered children to attend the schools in the Hempstead School District. On average, one in two bedroom apartments in the village of Hempstead, there were two to three families, different adults that came and registered children for school. In one-family homes, there were three to four families registered for school. I'm really, really, really concerned. And as I said, I'm a former board member, so I know for fact what goes on in Hempstead. I do know that the people in Hempstead will not be counted. I do know that we need trusted messengers to knock on those doors. Because as a community advocate, I've knocked on doors. And I'm trusted in my community, in the Black part. But when I knock on Latino doors, they don't speak English. Or they say they don't speak English when they see me, because they don't know what capacity I'm knocking on their door. So we need, in that community, we need trusted messengers to retrieve that information from those families. We need the churches. We need the community-based organizations that serve those people and their children on a regular basis so that we can get the information that we need. I live in a community where at least a third of the children are educated in trailers because we don't have the schools to hold the students that we have. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call up Lamia Okulili.
Hi, good evening. Actually, I'm Adam Okulili. I'm a doctor. I'm her husband. She left.
We will accept substitutes in that case, then.
Okay. I'm really very blessed by hearing all of this discussion, and I'm sorry I'm talking at this late time. But as a physician, I'm gonna... So the first problem that we have, like psychological problem from trust against mistrust, so we have people that we need to reach to them, and they don't trust us because they think we might jump on them or harm them or causing problem, and they don't know how much benefit they can gain from this. So for this reason, like everybody says, the community people are the best people to outreach to them. So we need to make those people in charge of this, and we need to hear from them. What is your plan? What are the resources you ask for? And how much return you can bring to us? So it's like any project. I expect to get $10, I will give you $1 to spend it on this investment. That's my opinion. I don't say that you have to take it. But in the other part, I believe in the volunteer work. So the volunteer work I'm thinking of, community colleges, we have a lot of community colleges. We can outreach to those colleges and make some that semester for the kids, they take a subject of census, and they can really work on this as our advocate. This is not gonna really, you know, cost them a lot. We might even sponsor it, because most of our community colleges, as Stony Brook and Farmingdale and Suffolk County here, they are very good colleges, and they have very good programs. They have very good people there. If we reach them now, they can put it in the curriculum. And I believe this will work very well, to reach out to these remote areas, and those kids are very smart. They can really get there, they can reach there. Also, the high schools, they have community service. Every little thing's count. So if we make those kids make their community service for the graduation, for the year, in this regard, and it be counted, because they come to our office to do community service, okay, I will put you in census. If the county will put like kiosk in a mall or any place, this also will add on. A lot of other ideas. If you want to put, you know, if you want to reach those people, let them be reached where they go. So let's say if they go to the mall, put it in the mall. If they go to the school, put it in the school. And put a person, and put also education, in a church, in a mosque, in a temple, in any place. Those people will really work very well for this, and they will be able to convince them and make them able, and we all will achieve what we are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Very good diagnosis and prescription. Thank you. Let's call Randy Dresner.
Hello, and thank you for giving me some time to talk. I want to thank our friends who are here today, commissioners, county executive. My name is Randy Schubendresner. I'm President and CEO of Island Harvest Food Bank, advocacy chair of the Food Bank Association of New York State, and a number of other organizations. As an organization that serves 300,000 people across Long Island who are the hungriest and most needy families, Island Harvest Food Bank is deeply invested in making sure that there is an accurate census count on Long Island and through New York State. However, this year, we know that this is going to be more challenging than ever before. Vulnerable families are often hiding in our communities. They are living in the shadows and interacting only with those they believe they could trust, such as organizations like Island Harvest, who work deep in the community with boots on the ground. Yet, we are realistic. To do the level of outreach and strategic work necessary to ensure the accurate count, community-based organizations will need at least the state's allocation of $20 million to be appropriated in a way that recognizes the challenges in every region our state faces. Long Island is much different than, say, Bovinia, New York, for example. Leveraging private and public partnerships are important, but we need the state to understand how challenging this census will be for our residents here on Long Island. Seniors, families in poverty, struggling veterans, and our newly arrived families are all living in stressful situations. It will take a tremendous amount of work to ensure we reach everyone. We are prepared to be part of this important collaborative work at Island Harvest. You know, as commissioners, that the census data is used to fund very important programs. As an example, and as you know, SNAP, the nation's first line of defense and greatest resource to help lift people out of poverty, and WIC, a vital nutritional security program for babies and new moms, are both funded as a result of the data derived through the census. As commissioners, you are in important positions of power to do tremendous good for Long Island and New York State in recognizing the challenges ahead that we face. You can ensure that money is effectively and completely appropriated to organizations that are trusted in the community, as you've heard today, and committed to make sure that every family and person counts. We urge you to do this, to consider the full allocation of at least $20 million. I thank you for the opportunity to have all of our testimony today included in the discussion and to understand how passionate we all are about this important effort. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of more. Carla Bradley? Javier Guzman? Uchaba Ali?
Good evening, everyone. My nickname is Alibaba for short, and it's easier to pronounce. I'm coming from Brooklyn, New York. I work at a small nonprofit. It's called Council People's Organization. We serve about, I mean, it was our record-breaking year. We serve about 20,000 clients a year, and we're only 16 years old. The types of services that we provide ranges from children of four years old all the way to seniors. I should tell you, like, in the beginning, we were actually called Council of Pakistan Organization, because we were located in the Pakistani community. As time progressed after 9/11, we saw the demographics change, and we saw a different type of people come to our community. I mean, there was blacks, whites, Asians, Hispanics, you name it. What that urged our board to do was change the name. It became Council of People's Organization. You know, we're here for the people. I really like working at my organization. I mean, some of the services we provide is pre-K, is food stamps, health insurance, legal. We have an ONA clinic on site, ONA LDP, ONA Opportunity. There's many other services, senior services. Just recently, we opened up and we broke history by serving seniors halal meals on wheels. It's the first time it's ever happened in New York City, and that's with the New York City Department for the Aging. This just happened December 2018. What I'm saying is, at my organization, I like, what I like to do, I know my purpose in life is to help others. I like taking on other people's burdens and putting them on my shoulders. And the census, it's gonna help us out. It just makes sense. I don't know what the exact amount is that you guys need to have this full census count, whether it's $20 million, $40 million, $80 million, whatever it is, you guys know better. You guys are doing a public service. I'd be very grateful to all of you if you could take some of my burden, you know, some of the burden off my shoulders, you know, and take that onto your shoulders, so I can help more people out. That's all I ask. You guys know what to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Barbara Raymond? And last, but certainly not least, Tom Breeden?
I think it's last and least.
No, no, Tom.
As we've learned in the, unfortunately, in the last several years, sometimes marketing is more important than facts and reality, so I'm hoping when you roll out this campaign, marketing will be a prominent part of your thoughts. I think you need to remind people that filling out the census means dollars coming to New York and perhaps less tax on you in the future, to remind people that no government agency has access to what you write, and I learned today that you don't have to fill out every question on the census to still have it filled. I'm a U.S. citizen, but I will not answer that question if it's on the census. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I want to thank again the commissioners for attending today, as well as County Executive Bellone, let's give him a big round of applause. As well as the panelists, this was a really great session, so we really appreciate everything and all the efforts that you were doing here in Suffolk County and then also in Nassau County, because we heard a lot from Nassau. Next Thursday, we are in Buffalo. Mayor Brown will be hosting us. I heard there's gonna be lots of Buffalo wings and things for us there, so we're really happy about that.
Wings, drinks.
Wings, everything.
You'll be hearing about how great I am.
Just for the record, we want to establish, I'll say that right now, the great mayor of Buffalo. There you go. For the record, Byron Brown is a great mayor of Buffalo. So next Thursday, April 18th, 5:00 p.m., in Buffalo Waterfront Elementary, PS95 Auditorium. And until then, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.